Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 23 Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to welcome everybody tonight. It's good to see American Democracy in Action out there, and I'm really pleased to see the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts here tonight. This is the... And we want you to stay all the way to the end.
Pass their bedtime.
You don't get the merit badge unless you stay to the very end. Well, anyway, I'd like to introduce Reverend Pam McCurdy from Bethany Methodist Church that will lead us in the invocation tonight, and then Charlie Stewart from the Boy Scouts will lead us in the place of allegiance. So those who are willing and able to stand, please do so.
Let us pray. Guiding God, thank you for the gift of this day and our time together. We thank you for the variety of abilities that you have given each of us. Help us as we strive always to use our abilities in ways that honor and please you. Help us as we strive to use our abilities to comfort others and to strengthen our community so that healing, hope, and wholeness are a reality. Thank you for the beautiful diversity of Cobb County. Thank you for all of Cobb County's public servants. Today, we lift up to you, our county commissioners. Keep them in your love and care. Keep watch over them as they work to promote peace and order and justice in our community. I am asking you, O God, that you would graciously grant them good health and the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual strength for the task of governing, clarity and wisdom to govern in these times, a sense of well-being and the needs of every person in Cobb County, also a genuine desire for fairness and rightness in all things, and, Lord, the ability to work together for the good of the community when there is honest disagreement. With trust, God, in your ever-guiding presence, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, look over here, guys. Over here.
At the flag.
This way, right here. There's the flag, right there. Okay, we're good.
Yeah, come on back in.
All right, everyone, please place your hand over your heart. Play allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, just want to do some admin procedures before we get into our first tab tonight, which is Tab 4. Deborah, how many people we have signed up for public comment?
You have 11.
11. Okay. Out of those 11 people who are signed up for public comment, if you could please stand, let me know if you're here to talk about the senior fees. I just want to get a head count, because I'm trying to accommodate this for you, so if you... I don't want to say something to my defense, like, it's a little... This might be a little bit late for your bedtime, but, you know, I won't go there. Right. Anyway, if you're here to talk about the senior fees, just please stand up, because I want to get you earlier in the program.
I got the word.
One? Okay. So I think then, given... What I'd like to do is have her address the... After we do Tab 4, I'd like to have her come and talk to the board, and then we'll... I'm going to ask for a motion to add on Tab 5A, which is the senior fee agenda item. And then after we hear her comment, we'll address Tab 5A. Does that work, everybody on the board?
Sir.
Okay. So what we're going to do then is we're going to have that young lady come up and talk about the senior fees, and after she sits down, then we're going to go to Tab 5A, which is an add-on tonight to discuss the senior membership fees. So with that, I make a motion to add the Tab 5A to the agenda for tonight. You have a second. Any discussion? Call a question? Passes 5-0. Thank you. All right. So with that, we have some presentations. So Commissioner Hott, you got the first one.
All right, Missy, come on down. Or come on up, I guess, whatever. I want you all to meet a really special lady and her family, her team. Come on, Vic. You're part of this. There was Dan and... Is it Josh? Who's the sergeant?
Josh.
Yeah, Josh. Okay. Yeah, you all, you guys, come on up here. You stay over here, Missy. Everybody else over here. Now, when I read this proclamation, you're going to find out how this lovely lady over here took a time of personal tragedy and sorrow and has turned it into a life of dedication and service to a community in need. Whereas the Davis Direction Foundation serves as a local, state, and national role model of recovery, it strives to remove the stigma of opiate addicts and innovatively revamp the rehabilitation process to appropriately address the disease of opioid heroin addiction. The foundation provides direct assistance and services to individuals, family members, and others at risk or experiencing opioid-related overdose. And whereas the organization is the leading resource in our community for fighting addiction and promoting recovery, it provides state-approved probation and payroll community service hours and crisis phone support, email support, and social media support to residents. David Direction Foundation also provides innovative prevention education to our youth and surrounding school systems and biannual drug addiction and recovery evaluation symposiums in the community. And the foundation opened the first and only Cobb County recovery community organization called The Zone, where resources are used to help opioid and heroin addicts find long-term recovery. The Zone provides many services, including sober sports, social connections, recovery coaching and meetings, a computer lab, resource library, thrift store, yoga, game room, haircuts, music, and art, relaxation techniques, and a food pantry. And whereas the Davis Direction Foundation partners with the Cobb County Sheriff's Office to develop individual recovery plans for inmates, it also partners with the Cobb County District Attorney's Office to provide the Zoned For Reentry certification to Drug Court participants. The foundation provides harm reduction devices for high-risk families and harm reduction training for law enforcement. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize Davis Direction Foundation as a local, state, and national model of recovery. The organization's prevention, education, and recovery services tremendously help our community continue the fight against substance use disorders and addictions. This is the 23rd day of January. So why don't you tell folks about what you do and your story, and tell us about your family?
Oh, thanks. In... On March the 4th, 2014, my husband, Michael, and I... We lost our son to a heroin overdose and the disease of addiction. And as a family, we just decided that it shouldn't be that way, because there weren't really any resources to support him or others like him. And we started rallying this community, and this community came together in an unbelievable way to support people and their families who have addiction issues. And we have The Zone, which is what we lovingly call the house that Cobb built, because I think just about everybody in Cobb County gave a little piece to that house. And it's a place where people in recovery can come to stay in recovery and feel loved and acceptance. And we're going to build communities of recovery all over this nation. So that's what we do. And I thank you.
(Applause).
This is my family. This is my blood family. But this is my recovery family, and we do pretty much everything together. And I couldn't get along without them, and we've got the support of Marietta PD and many others. Vic Reynolds serves on our Board of Directors. Kaye Kirkpatrick is here, and she's been instrumental in helping us get things passed so that we can be a model of recovery. And the commissioners have been amazing to us, and it's just a great thing that we're doing for people who have the disease of addiction, who have found their way into recovery, and they're some of the most amazing people I've ever known.
All right. Yeah, you're going to do a picture.
(Inaudible). All right, and 3, 2, 1.
Missy, always a pleasure having you here. Commissioner Weatherford, you're up.
Thank you. We have another great presentation tonight, and I would like to kind of do this in stages if Chief Register, Director Heaton of Public Safety, and Mr. Chow Lee would come forward along with Lieutenant Maddox, and then we'll bring the rest of the team forward here in just a minute. When I bring her up? You want to come? You haven't done anything tonight that they could sniff. We're bringing them up in stages, okay? Yes. We're here tonight to accept a donation from Mr. Lee from the Atlanta Chinese Life Organization that started a fun run and a GoFundMe account to raise money for our K-9 unit. Lieutenant Maddox is over the K-9 unit, and I believe he has a team here that he would like to bring in, and if you could do that now, sir, that'd be great. This is laser.
Explosive.
What kind?
Explosive.
Okay. I took a bath. All right. I think he... Do you have other members of your team here?
Sergeant Quinn.
You bring the sergeant forward. Come on. We are honored to have this team here, and we're honored what you've done for this team, and if you would like to say a few words, it'd be great, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chow Lee. Actually, I live in Marietta for more than eight years. Actually, I'm running right now a mobile social media named Atlanta Chinese Life, mainly to pass the information to help the local community to know what is happening in the area. The story starts with last year, one of our community members got murdered. And, okay, long story short, with the help with the Cobb County Department of Police, they found the suspicion spread like a few days later. The story published through us, and the community got really kind of like excited and want to learn more about what these heroes are doing, and we learned with their risk their life to protect us, to protect the labor who... And we also learned the K-9 unit, actually, we visited the K-9 unit, and we published the article and the story again. People said, hey, let's get together, do something, and to help them to help us. So with the internet, we published a GoFundMe kind of like campaign, and tried to reach the goal, $12,000, to buy more equipment and even buy more K-9 members to the Cobb County Department of Police. Good news, after, I believe it's two months, and we reached the goal, and today, on behalf of the whole local community, special Chinese immigrant community, we try to use this opportunity to express our appreciation to the Cobb County and the Cobb County Department of Police and K-9 unit and all of the heroes to help us, to protect us. So I bring the checks. So this is... Oh, okay. This actually... The final number is $12,221. When we withdrew the money, they kind of gave 3% of the transition fee. So the final number will be 18,000?
We'll take 18,000.
I'm sorry.
You want to add to it? You want to add a zero?
But again, it's not a really big amount, but that's our heart, and we want to try to, on behalf of the community, to say thank you so much.
I think 12,000's a pretty good job, isn't it? Thank you. Way to go. Tell us, Lieutenant, what you're going to use that for.
Those funds go into the K-9 fund. It's a general line item that the K-9 fund has access to, that buys equipment that may not be budgeted for. The unit allows us to purchase items that are specific to the dogs. In the past, it's bought them vests, K-9 ballistic vests, and then K-9 first aid kits for each dog, so we can really take care of our partners, and they're an important part of our life and the police department's life. And a great community outreach, we had a fantastic event with Mr. Lee, the K-9 Fun Run. We had a "Who Let the Dogs Out" dance performance by the youth. It was... They tried to give me to perform. I said, no. But it was a great event with the community. So it was fantastic, and this donation is enormous, and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Broll came down and petted the dog. She is a great supporter of this unit as well, and has raised many funds for that in her annual fees. So let's give them all a big hand, and thank them very much.
Okay, now we're going to go ahead as we modify the agenda tonight. We'll have the young lady who wants to speak on senior fees, as she would come up to the podium, please, and just let us know who you are and where you live, and then we'll give you... I never get the time for that. Five minutes. Right, okay.
I'm Marjorie Miller. I live in Powder Springs, and I am an active member of the West Cobb Senior Center, and it's on behalf of the senior centers that I wish to speak tonight. First of all, to you members of the Board of Commission, I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and share our concerns. I have two questions to ask of you this evening. First of all, why are you punishing 6,000 seniors for your inability to live within your budget? You might say, oh, no, we're not doing that. But it seems to us and our families that that's exactly what you're doing. You have a $30 million shortfall. You're asking us to help you make it up by paying $60 times 6,000 members, or a total of $360,000. Have you realized that $360,000 provides only 1.2% of your deficit, while your increased cost for staff, pensions, and healthcare comes to 53% of your deficit? Surely you can find other areas of your budget in which to find $360,000. A second question. What's the difference between a member of the Kiwanis coming into the centers for free and using that center where you charge $60 for a senior citizen to come in for two hours of knitting, or exercise, or socializing? You have no idea what these centers mean to the members, and $60 is going to keep many of them from coming to their detriment. And so I request sincerely, and I think maybe you've already made up your minds, it's what I hear, but I sincerely request that just as you have rethought other aspects of your original assessments for our great senior centers, you rethink the membership fee and remove it from the 2019 budget, or at least postpone it for further consideration. Please, on behalf of our 6,000 seniors.
Okay, and I want to make sure that if you're a senior, you want to talk about this. Got to make sure you sign up here on the sign-in sheet here by the camera. And if you sign in, you get a free picture with a cameraman. It's a twofer. All right, with that, we'll now go to Tab 5A, which is to discuss the senior fees.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. I'm Dr. Jackie McMorris, Deputy County Manager. I stand before you today to ask the Board to authorize a revision to the proposed membership fees for senior service program participants, maintain the current class and rental fees for senior service program participants. As you may recall, Cobb County has approved fees for various programs, services, registrations, permits, and rentals offered through a variety of departments. On 14 November 2017, the Board of Commissioners reviewed a comprehensive schedule of fees for various public service activities, including some that are related to our senior service activities. At that time, the Board of Commissioners authorized staff to begin the implementation of the fee program. Excuse me. After preliminary communications of the proposed fees, a number of senior service participants expressed concerns and requested additional information from the Board of Commissioners. In response to those requests, a series of town halls were conducted, and the results summarized and presented to the Board of Commissioners during its January 22, 2018 work session. After reviewing the summary report, the Board of Commissioners requested an agenda item for formal consideration and adoption. So the Board of Commissioner maintains the prior approval of annual resident $60 fee and $90 non-resident membership fee. The annual $60 resident and $90 non-resident membership fees can be paid either at $5 per month, or all-in-one lump sum of 60, or $7.50 monthly, or the $90 one-time payment for non-resident membership fee. Further review of these fees will be done in the ensuing months to determine future recommendations to be brought back to the Board of Commissioners. So I stand here before you today to ask the Board to approve a revision to the proposed membership fees for senior service program participants, maintain the current class and rental fees as they are today for senior service program participants, and appoint Mr. Michael Murphy, the chairman's assistant for special projects, to organize a committee to recommend potential changes to class and rental fees for senior service program participants.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McMorris. I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendation as read except for the revision that will maintain the membership fees for Cobb residents and non-residents as passed by the Board in November 14, 2017, but to allow for monthly payment option. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cupid?
Okay. The fee structure that we are proposing today, it would be made effective when?
Well, it's already... The membership fees will be effective starting with 1st of February.
Okay.
But the class fees will stay what they've been before November 14.
So there'll be no changes to the class fees?
That's correct.
Class or rental fees?
Class or rental fees.
Yes.
Well, I'm just saying that we passed the membership fee on November 14. That will stay, except that we'll allow monthly payments. The other fees... Okay, that's... When you said it, that's what you were saying.
Yeah, right. And then the payments for the class fees will be what they were up until November 14. That will stay in place.
Okay, so the $60 fee would be prorated, the $90 fee would be prorated?
Correct, correct. There's an option for that.
Per month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the fees for the nonprofit organizations would remain the same?
Correct.
There had been a question about general fees across the entire public service organization we've heard, particularly with respect to nonprofit organizations. Could this effort to assess those fees not also include that? Because it seemed as if that was an unfinished item from...
Well...
...part of the discussion.
I'd have to ask them, there's the Board, quite honestly, Commissioner. The issue for me over the last two months that I heard was from seniors about the class fees and the rental fees going up to a point where it was going to force them out of their facility. I honestly could count on one hand the number of people I heard from from other institutions other than the senior center.
Okay, I thought we received... I know I've received significant correspondence from nonprofits across public services. Have you received any correspondence from nonprofit organizations across the county?
We have received some clarification, some information. I would defer to Jimmy Giesi, who's over Parks, to...
Primarily in Parks.
Primarily in Parks. And from what I understand, the fee structure hasn't been that adverse to our participants, because it wasn't that much of a jump for those in Parks. However, I would, again, I would like to ask Jimmy if he has heard any... A lot of pushback or any pushback from some of the nonprofits that may be using those particular facilities?
And, you know, this is... I'm not trying to steer the effort away from senior services, because that's where a lot of our focus has been, because, you know, they've dominated the discussion about increased fees. But I can tell you from my own personal observation of usage from our centers and from communication of nonprofits within the district, that I would at least appreciate some consideration in this effort to reevaluate the fees for the senior centers, for us to evaluate the fees within our, specifically, our recreation centers, not even just recreation centers, but whatever facilities nonprofits are utilizing, because...
Civic organizations and nonprofits.
Civic organizations. You know, I hold a monthly meeting at our recreation center in the district, and I was shocked when I walked in there, and it was to the tune of crickets. And the discussion I had with staff and also with residents was that many of the organizations will not be returning because they cannot afford the fees, the fee structure that has been put in place. So we moved from a center that has been vibrant to our community to one where it's now going to be less utilized, underutilized, or not utilized. And I'm very concerned about that. And again, I'm not asking for us to steer the conversation away, but I'm asking for us to be inclusive of the impact that the fee structure has had on nonprofit organizations throughout the county. Yes, Jimmy, you are... Sorry.
Yes. Okay. We do have quite a few requests, mainly at the civic center and at some of our community centers and recreation centers. It had become commonplace to either lower the fees... It had become commonplace to either lower the fees or waive them in the past, and we are now under a strict, that staff does not have that authority to waive fees. The Board sets the policy on what the fees are, and it's up to staff to carry out that direction. So if we can come up with some type of a system to where we're, we have a prorated amount or a reduced amount, we'll be glad to enforce that.
Okay.
But you're right, we have got a couple of comments from church groups that utilize our gymnasiums, but it's, I'd say, less than five so far.
Okay, I've heard from homeowners associations and also from our civic organizations that represent communities, that they've, are struggling in determining how they're going to pay for use of the fee. So I would just ask the Board if they would be willing to consider us looking at that also.
We can certainly expand the, the charter of Mr. Murphy to look at all these fees. I mean, but I think the key that we need to remember here is that this isn't a hedge, or someday it'll get buried in the future, like we're not going to come back and visit this. Ladies and gentlemen, there's going to be fees associated with these buildings. The challenge right now is that the fees appear to be unfair or arbitrarily drawn up, which I know wasn't the case. But I don't, but if we do that, I don't want the signal to go out that we're not going to come back here in a few months with another fee structure. There will be another fee structure. And it's going to, it's going to be, the difference this time is we're going to involve the community in the discussion for that fee structure. So, you know, my line is, what's a few more months for, for the recreation and the civic center? It's not going to, it's not going to break the bank. The reality is, is that most of these programs are already serviced. We're just trying to cut down on our, at an early stage and cut down on deficit, which you know is going to be there. But as long as we understand that this is not a political tool to bury something in the infinite committee, because Mr. Murphy's going to come back, you know, not in a long period of time, but in a shorter period of time, with a proposal from the community. And I doubt very much that this time the Board is not going to adopt it because it will be ahead of the community input. So I'm fine with revising my motion to include the recreation centers. But I think what we need to do is add a time limit on the committee. I would say not later than the first of June. Does that sort of...
So one of the things we would ask is that patrons give us a little time to work out the kinks, because, you know, as you're aware, this was all put into a brand-new database. And so we just asked that you be patient with us, because the start date was going to be February first, which is just right around the corner. So we would do everything we can to make sure that we don't pose an adverse impact on our seniors and any of our patrons, but just give us a little patience to make sure that we can implement these changes that they have been brought to you all tonight.
Commissioner Rock?
I was just going to say, you know, we spent time yesterday talking about the senior fees, and to kind of add this at the last minute, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that. We had a long conversation about it yesterday, you know, and it's like we just keep adding to this. I would be fine with including it in Michael's committee to consider it, but I just don't think we need to be not having these fees, because mainly, the effort that staff has put in, they now have to go back and undo it, and it's going to prevent us from being able to let people register for programs. I mean, it'd be one thing if we hadn't entered it into the system, but it's all entered into the system already, and it's going to be a huge effort on staff. I hear what you're saying. I think that over the next couple of months, when the committee is considering the senior fees, they can consider the rec fees, but I do not think that we should also ask staff to now back those out of the system, too.
I understand, and I think, I think it gives me comfort is that I don't think this is a lot of people, a lot of groups. If it was a hundred people...
Right, but it's a lot of work for a few people, and all I'm saying is, I would ask you to just put your motion what it was in before with seniors, and just let staff only have to make that change, let Michael Murphy's committee look at all the rest of the fees, the ones that Commissioner Cupid has asked about, come back in June like you asked. But I just think we're creating a huge workload for staff.
I'm fine with that. I can limit it to Commissioner Cupid's...
I mean, I agree that we should look at what she's talking about, but, you know, we heard from staff yesterday, and I know, Commissioner Cupid, you weren't here, but it's going to delay staff be able to get people signed up for programs, and they're going to have to, it's just a whole lot of work that they're going to have to kind of go back and repeat.
Okay, so, sure, absolutely.
Have the senior fees for classes been implemented at the higher level?
No, ma'am. Not the classes...
For registration?
No, ma'am, because initially, we had said we was going to keep those fees the same for the winter classes, which are going on now.
Okay.
And that we would implement the new fees for the spring courses, which would begin in April, I think. So we have not implemented new fees in the system for seniors, because we were going to do that in the spring.
Okay, but we have for the parks and rec groups.
A lot of our... Wait, I'm sorry.
We have for the parks and civic center at the higher fees?
They are in the system because we, we book our rentals so far in advance that we've already taken reservations for March, April, May, June, under the new rate structure. So if we go back on it now, then we've got to go back and start trying to figure out how much we have to refund to all the people that have, that have reserved already. It would be much easier on staff if we could stick with the fees that we have and maybe deal with it on a case-by-case basis until the committee comes back. Oh, that was my intent, absolutely. Yeah, I think those concerns that are brought to the Commissioner, they can come directly to public services, and you're going to be working out at that level.
Yes, as long as there is a pathway to do so. You know, I know in the past that there has always been unique consideration given towards our nonprofits. It's been my understanding that that hasn't been the case moving forward as we set the new fee structure. And if the Board is supportive of doing that, then I'm supportive of supporting that effort, just because I think we all recognize the value that these service organizations bring to our communities.
Okay, so, sure, Commissioner Weatherford, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Giesi, can, have you seen a drop-off on the registration on any of the centers or anything like that, those are new fees?
On our, on our classes and rentals also, our increases were so much more minimal than the senior services fees, we've not heard a single comment from the class registrations or the rentals. We actually had our president's meeting of our youth associations last night for their spring contract signing, and there wasn't a comment there either. So I think we're okay.
The only comments I've had, Chairman, is from youth sports, and that was basically with the in-county, out-of-county things, and I believe we've addressed all of those, but I haven't heard anything from any nonprofits or anything like that.
Well, I'm okay, let's, let's go ahead and revise that to a case-by-case basis that be brought to the attention of this Commissioner, and they'll work, worked out these issues with the public services. And otherwise, we'll leave the existing fee structure in place, except for the senior centers, as we've addressed here tonight, and the revisions as proposed. So, any further discussion?
Yes, there also is, because we've also heard from seniors that said even with the prorated amount, for some, it would be still a challenge for them to be able to afford the use of the senior center. This has been done in some of the town hall meetings, but I would ask in this forum, if you can please explain the, the opportunity for seniors who are at a limited income to be able to access some assistance, to be able to afford our senior centers?
Absolutely, Commissioner. So for those seniors who cannot, for whatever reason, afford a membership fee, we will work with them. We will start with asking them to provide documentation of their income, so that it's fair and equitable. We're using the federal poverty level scale to determine that. In addition, staff is also trying to seek sponsorship for some of those seniors who cannot afford to do it. It was never intended that we would be dismissive or turn seniors away. The former director, Ms. Gill, had basically said to you all when she presented it to you, that we would do everything in our power to make sure that seniors still would be able to participate, whether it's through sponsorships or through looking at this poverty scale, to make sure that seniors could come. Now, that's just for memberships, that's not for classes.
But it's my understanding, after this discussion today, that the class fee would remain as is?
The class fees remain the same.
Okay, so beyond memberships, it was my understanding that there's always been a policy in place to look at income level? Has that applied to classes in the past, or?
Not for classes, because those are amenities that seniors choose to take. So if you want to take an exercise class, or a yoga class, or an art class, that's not like coming in to socialize, as the young lady just talked about a moment ago, or to participate in quilting or some other social activity. Those are things that you choose to do, that we have to pay the instructor in many cases. So therefore, those fees are to pay the instructors for the cost of that class.
It's more optional.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then also during the senior town hall meetings, there was discussion towards couples, and I thought I heard some support for those, if there's two members of the home that utilize the facilities for some consideration to be given. Has that been given any thought in this process?
It was, but it wasn't supported.
Okay, so the only accommodation will be for prorating the amount?
Yes, ma'am. And remember, if you don't, if you're on vacation or something, you just don't pay that one, so. And the five dollars we collect every month, so even though it's sixty dollars a year, those who pay sixty dollars a year are ones who are going to use that facility on a regular basis. But if you pay five dollars a month, and you have, and something comes up, you become ill, you know, they're just not going to collect the five dollars because you're on a five-dollar fee.
And we're going to implement this when?
Next, the first.
So I just even think about the administration of monitoring five dollars a month payments for six hundred members, and then accommodating for whether or not they're going to be out of town or pay. I mean, what is the workload associated with that?
We were trying, we were trying to find a way to reach people that couldn't pay the sixty dollars, because we appreciated the fact that there are people here who have incomes where a sixty-dollar chunk out of their paycheck in one month made it untenable for them to pay the annual fee. So we thought that spreading the fee out over twelve months was a more reasonable approach.
I'm not questioning this reason, I'm, I'm, just as this Board talked about workload, I am asking what is going to be the workload associated with monitoring five dollar a month payments?
It's going to cost more than five dollars to monitor five dollars.
But, but this is, this is the middle ground we're taking to work with the seniors.
That's right, so we are going to do it, and we're not going to turn anyone away, but it's going to be a partnership, I think, a shared responsibility for that senior to let the staff know in that particular facility, they're going on vacation, they're taking some time or whatever. Staff would just have to make a note, a journal note, that they're not going to be there. Otherwise, it is going to be a little challenging to keep up with who's paid and who hasn't. The system doesn't allow you to, as I understand it, to keep up with who has not paid. It is only going to keep up with who has. So therefore, staff's going to have to keep up with who hasn't paid.
But as I was explaining to me yesterday, that when the machine comes in and you put your card in there, if you haven't paid, it'll tell you you haven't paid, and you go there and you pay your five dollars.
Right, here's the card.
Right. So the only administrative burden is collecting the five dollars, because the card is going to be able to tell you whether you paid your five dollars or not.
So you would come in and swipe your card, it's barcode, you swipe it. The system will capture that. However, if you come in and you don't have the card, staff will have to capture that, and the, and also...
Why would you not have a card?
Because you're not paid in full.
Well, the card will be used every month, the same card will be used every month.
Okay.
So when you swipe your card, it's, it's got a barcode on it, it tells you whether or not you paid that month or not. Are you issuing new cards every month?
It's a little bit more complicated than...
Are you issuing new cards every month?
No.
So, I don't, I don't think the barcode, you know, is going to be that big of a deal. As explained to me yesterday, I mean, it was a very clear conversation, all right, that explained to me that as long as the card, they have the card, they slip the card in there, the card will simply, if they hadn't paid, it would send off a signal, and that would bring, that would let the person at the window know they hadn't paid that month, they paid their five bucks, and then it'd go on, and it'd be set for the rest of the month. That's what was explained to me yesterday. If it's different than what I heard yesterday, I'm not a happy camper.
Well, we're still trying to work out all of the logistics for the cards, we really are, so that we can make sure, it can take the five dollars, it will take the five dollars per month, and that was one of the concerns that we had. Can the system actually accept five dollars a month? It can. It can.
Right.
I mean, I mean...
But if you don't pay the five dollars, it's not going to say you, it's not going to beep and say you didn't pay.
You're not going to get in without paying the five dollars.
I think that, I think she's telling us otherwise. I think that, I think that's our desire, but the way the system actually works, it's not going to lock you out of...
Right.
If you paid your five dollars, as explained to me yesterday, if you paid your five dollars, you're good for the whole month. As many times you use that card, it'll tell you you're good. And then on the first of the next month, when you put your card in there, a bell will go off saying you haven't paid, you pay your five bucks, they'll put it in the system, and you're good for the rest of the month.
Okay, and I, and I'm not hearing that assertion today.
Yeah, that's why I said be patient. Be patient with us, because we're having to rewrite code to make sure that it does what, excuse me, what we want it to do.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? We're not going to solve this right here now. I think the issue is that the seniors asked to have the ability to not have to pay the sixty dollars all at once. I think the Board yesterday in our discussions, everybody that was here yesterday, and I understand, Commissioner Cupid, you couldn't be here, thought that that was okay. The logistics of how it's going to work, I mean, we just threw it at them yesterday, so we're not going to solve it tonight. We got a whole lot of stuff to go through tonight, so I would suggest that we, actually, I'm going to call the question.
Okay. You can do that. No, you can do that. You have to respond to that once you call the question.
Okay, so, I, I have a question for clarification, though, based on this discussion. Would this be, is there a poss, is it possible this would not be implemented February first if all of this hasn't been worked out?
We're going to have it all worked out before February first, we're still working on it right now. That shouldn't be a problem, there's just a few other little things we have to work out to make sure that it, it actually all works together.
Okay.
So we can work that out, and February first is fine.
Okay, so I want to, I want to restate the motion for clarity. To approve a revision to provide, to propose membership fees for senior service program participants, to ma, to revise the statement to maintain the membership fees for Cobb residents and non-residents as passed by the Board of Resolute Board in November fourteen, two thousand seventeen, but to allow for a monthly payment option, and to also include in this, on a case-by-case basis, those fees, those fees from recreation and similar facilities to be considered in coordination between the Commissioner and public services, maintain current class and rental fees for senior service program participants, and appoint Mr. Michael Murphy, Chairman Assistant for Projects, to organize a committee to recommend potential change to class and rental fees for senior service program participants. Okay, I'm going to call it. So call the question. Passes five to zero. Okay, on tab six.
Good evening, Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here to request that you open the first public hearing on the January, February Code Amendments. I'm going to briefly go through the Code Amendments in the package. This is the same presentation that was provided to you yesterday at your work session. Code amendments are brought forward in two particular ways, either to Commissioner sponsor a proposal, or staff identifies an issue and brings it forward for consideration. This particular package covers the Economic Development Section of the Code, alcoholic beverages, environment, fire prevention, law enforcement, nuisances, offenses, and miscellaneous provisions, and zoning. All your chapters shown there. Getting into chapter two, which is the Economic Development Section of the Code, this adds some new definitions that were not previously in our code prior, and all of these definitions help in forming the new economic development strategy, which is laid out in later sections of the Code. The sections and the duties for economic development are adjusted a little bit. The primary source of these adjustments are to really focus their efforts towards small business recruitment and small business development, to help small businesses grow, which was not as clear as part of their mission and duties in the, in the past, and we're clarifying that that's an important part of their endeavors. Getting into the incentive program, and this is the bulk of what the changes are contained here. In the past, all of our economic development incentives was going for the big fish. It was a one-size-fits-all approach. So if you didn't meet the criteria of the big fish, then you aren't able to benefit from any of the services programs that economic development was able to provide. We decided that it'd be best for us to kind of diversify our mechanisms for how we try to grow all different businesses in Cobb County. And these aren't all economic incentives in the sense of giving, you know, giving tax breaks away, these are other types of services that are provided, because every single type of business needs something different to grow. And so we're trying not to do a one-size-fits-all approach, do as we do this. So we've migrated from three different incentives to... So we've migrated from three different incentives to seven incentives. I'll go through each one of these individually for the board and for the public. We start off with the entrepreneurship and innovation program. The eligibility for these are one of two. You either had to participate in the Ignite HQ incubator, which is an incubator run by Kennesaw State University and the Cobb Chamber of Commerce. In addition to that, we had a large economic development win this year as the Georgia Tech Research Institute is in the process of moving their employees up to Cobb County. So if you are either participated in our incubator or if it's a spin-off technology from GTRI, you would be eligible for this particular incentive. The incentives being offered for this particular program are potential to apply for cash grants through the Cobb Innovation Fund, which is monies put aside by the Development Authority of Cobb County, not from any county taxpayer revenue. The second incentive on this is a fifty percent reduction for two years to your business license fees. And then finally, a new program we've unveiled for all of these particular, all of these different services and programs, which is a business concierge service. The business concierge service purpose is to help businesses get through the different areas of Cobb County government. When you open a business, you know what you're doing to run a business. You don't know about permitting, you don't know about water taps, you don't know about fire marshal stuff. This particular, this particular group in economic development are going to help our businesses get through our different processes so they can concentrate on what they do best, which is running their business. Small business program, the eligibility for this particular program, you need to be located within the county. You also have to be up to date on your taxes. The type of incentives involving this particular, this particular program deals a lot with providing market data and real estate data to help them grow. Coordination with state and local agencies for ways that they can help small businesses expand. Access to our workforce training, which was one of the biggest issues that we hear from all types of companies is the, the need for different talent in their workforce. Our business concierge service and other information we can guide them towards to help them engross their businesses in appropriate ways. The business retention program is really geared towards businesses that are here in Cobb County and we hope to keep here in Cobb County. This is to help us fend off people who want to take our companies and bring them to other areas of metro Atlanta or other states. For this particular incentive, you would need to be existing in the county for five years. You'd need to agree to remain in the county three years after the incentive expiration date completes. Have to be a member of a current business cluster, not under a current incentive and of course be up to date on your taxes. As far as the type of incentives being involved in this, we have the same as before, which is access to your market data, coordination, access to workforce training and all those similar ones. The new ones that are being added to this are the ability to obtain, ability to obtain grants and inducements to the Development Authority of Cobb County, so as flexible payments for your sewer development.
You said me.
We ready?
No, we're just, we're just talking about nine hundred million dollars.
Very good, sir. I will go as quickly as I can further, then, sir. The targeted industry program deals is both similar to our existing, our existing incentive program, where our current program, though, you would have to meet two of, meet all three criteria of jobs created, average salary, and economic impact. We are recommending that this be adjusted to be similar to our peers in the region and only have to meet two of those three criterias. The other eligibility change is that we've incorporated a number of target clusters in order to ensure that we're being strategic with the way that we're incentivizing businesses. The incentives contained in this one are the exact same incentives that we have currently in our ordinance. The only addition is the business concierge service. The special economic impact is the same as the targeted industry program, except that the industries targeted are more broad and the requirements for investment in jobs increase substantially. So if you are, say, a headquarters that aren't part of the, one of the targeted businesses, you might fall into this special economic impact program, which would allow you access to the same incentives that are provided before. The commercial industrial rehab program, the enterprise zone program, and the incentives recapture provision are all pretty much the same and have really just been moved to different sections of the code. Chapter six is the alcoholic beverages section of the ordinance. What we are recommending changes here is allowing the Cobb International Airport to host closed functions where alcohol can be served. Additionally, we are recommending that the temporary alcoholic beverages for trade shows be removed from the ordinance. That was a request of the Coliseum Exhibit Hall Authority. And we're asking that the fees and suspensions be altered. Right now, you're able to pay one fee. For your first violation, you are able to pay a fee and then all other violations would need to go through the License Review Board. We are recommending a two-pronged approach where we have a progressive fee schedule and then you always have the ability, rather than paying the particular fee, to go to the License Review Board for judgment on, on your particular case.
Are those, go back, are those the accurate numbers?
It is the same issue that we had yesterday, sir. The slides have not been updated yet because I have not been in my office yet, sir. But yes, it's going to, they basically double from seven hundred and fifty to one thousand five hundred.
I guess that was no.
They will be for the next presentation, sir.
Well, you, you mentioned that they're fees, but they're really fines.
That is correct, sir. These are fines for people who violate the code.
Okay, so... I think we ought to call it what it is instead of-
The fee, suspension, and revocations is just the section of the code that it's in, sir.
But it says progressive fees added if violation, additional violations within twelve months. Is that, is that a fee or a fine?
I'd be fined, sir.
Oh, so you need to-
We will update that as well, sir.
Need to go back to your office now or later, I'm just curious. All right, sorry, Dana, I just-
It's okay, sir. Getting into chapter fifty, which is the environment. We are recommending a change to our noise ordinance to bring us in line with the current, current codes as it relates to fireworks. However, based upon a discussion that we're going to be having later on in this agenda, we're going to bring back a revision to this that'll allow us to meet the current code as well as any potential future revisions the state may consider as it relates to a House bill that passed last year. And we're hoping to recommend that the Senate will support as well, which is House Bill four nineteen. Chapter fifty-four is the fire protection prevention ordinance. This is where a burn ban restriction and basically outlawing current exemptions that are allowed in all areas to not be allowed when a medical burn ban is in place. This particular code will burn, will ban outdoor burning in any chimenea, fire bowl, outdoor fireplace, or other similar structure, as well as any fire department practice burns if a person in, you are within a radius of a medical burn ban. Chapters... We are going to consider chapters seventy and eighty-six together because it makes the most sense if you see them together as one. And these came from Ms. Hines with our solicitor's office, who's been working with Ms. Dance's staff with the county attorney's office to bring forward some changes that would allow the sheriff and police department to enforce custodial arrests for certain violations as it relates to public, um, public events. So disorderly conduct at special events, unauthorized personnel running onto a field, as well as public intoxication. These particular, these particular violations would allow for a sheriff or police officer to put them under custodial arrest, which will assist them in the prosecution of that later on through the court system. Chapter eighty-three is the nuisances section of the ordinance. This is where staff is recommending that we adjust the, adjust this code that will mandate that private property owners who have a utility easement in the back of their property would have to mow their grass. Right now, we have a particular issue where it's kind of unclear, kind of the code reads where if you had, the easement areas are exempt. So you can have a situation where a utility will go through and do the usual mowing, they usually do a couple of times a year, through their entire easements or through where the wires are, but they have additional easement areas that are on private property, they're not mowing that. And that's the responsibility of the private property owner. This is to make sure it's clear that the private property owner is responsible for their own property, even if an easement is contained on it. Chapter one thirty-four is, is the zoning ordinance. This first one dealing with single-family dwelling units at the request of the sponsoring commissioners, we will be taking this out of the package, so I am not going to cover this tonight. The second item, staff brought forward and based upon the conversation with the board yesterday, we'll be removing this one as well and rethinking that based upon direction from the board as it related to that conversation yesterday. So those will not be in your package next go around. Public notice and advertisement, this one, we have, um, our public notification process was never part of our code, it was always part of our procedures. In this particular case, we are asking for those procedures to be brought into the codified section of the code. And the only change between our procedures and what's in this code is that the notification period would go from fifteen days to thirty days. The rationale for that is a sign goes up thirty days before the planning commission hearing. And we want to make sure that the letters go to the property owners within the proper, appropriate radius at the same time that the signs go up. Next section of the code deals with the recreational space community overlay district. This was a commissioner request where we were asked to bring forward a code section that would function like the open space community, but allow for certain types of active recreation to occur within that particular space. So in essence, it would allow clustering development for active and passive recreation within developments. This has been restricted a little more than the OSC. The OSC is allowed in the very low-density residential, low-density residential, and low, and medium-density residential, future land use categories. This particular code would only be allowed in the low-density residential and medium-density residential categories. It also restricts it to just three zoning categories where you can utilize it, residential thirty, residential twenty, and residential fifteen. Otherwise, primarily, the same regulations that we have for the open space community are the same as what we are seeing here for the recreational space community with those caveats that I just explained. Yes, sir.
It's the same as the current OSC, which, since we revised that, does not allow a density bonus, correct?
That's correct, sir. So there's no density bonus with this either, sir.
Okay.
It's, it's based on the current rules of the OSC.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir. The neighborhood commercial, the neighborhood retail commercial is the next set of changes. This was a request from a commissioner to look at the uses that are contained within the neighborhood commercial category. Primarily, what we have done is we have removed most of the automotive, automobile-oriented uses from the particular code. We've also updated the lighting requirements to make sure it's environmentally sensitive downward spacing lights. The special exemptions have been removed, the special exemption section of the ordinance, which is something we've been doing for all the zoning codes as we open them up. And then also, we've removed the size limit on convenience stores for store size, which we've done for all other zoning categories except for the NRC. And here are, are require, are changes to the way lot size variance and road frontage variances are granted. Right now, people have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and then come forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval. This would take the Board of Zoning Appeals out of it so that an applicant can get a faster, faster decision on it by coming directly to the Board of Commissioners. This also contains additional parking requirements for purpose-built student housing. There was something that occurred in the past year where, um, where enough parking was not provided for purpose-built student housing because the code did not require the appropriate amount. So we are coming back and asking for a higher limit for purpose-built student housing because they are different than regular apartment communities. Finally, based upon a request from the public safety department and code enforcement, we're recommending a change to the escorts for moving buildings where the public safety department will be able to determine the appropriate number up to four for a house move. The last section of the code is a workforce housing section of the ordinance. This is one where I want to give some credit to Mr. Ron Siphon and to Mr. Michael Murphy, who both worked on a basic framework for how we could find a strategy for affordable, for-sale housing options that are geared towards moderate to low to moderate income individuals that is, that is priced around the sixty to a hundred percent range of area median income, which is a HUD figure that determines average wages for people within metro areas. They do it all across the country. Basically, what this will do, it would allow developers to build RM eight, RM twelve, RM sixteen, UVC and PVC zoning categories within the high-density residential community activity center, regional activity center, and on the edge of the MDR, closest to commercial, future land use category. So it's basically opening up the areas where you can do these higher-density developments. The trade-off is that we are asking for some type of agreement where we can ensure that those sales are occurring to people of the appropriate range of area median income. This would allow for attached and detached units. We're asking for a HOA to be created with a rental cap contained therein, that the infrastructure is public.
I have a question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
While the developer may be constrained to have homes of a certain price point, has there been consideration on resale of a home and how that could be limited?
Under the current drafting of the ordinance, it does not deal with resales. It only deals with the initial sale.
Okay.
Could you go ahead and tell those who don't know the acronyms, what UVC, PVC?
Yes, sir. UVC is urban village commercial and PVC is planned village commercial, which are zoning categories which are generally higher, more intense type of zoning categories that can also do a mixture of use, mixture of uses contained within them.
Hey, could you explain the difference between a CAC and a RAC?
Yes, sir. A community activity center is, there's three types of, in the future land use realm, there's three different types of commercial nodes. There's the neighborhood, the neighborhood activity center, which is your smallest area, more, really more geared towards the subdivisions that are kind of right there. Your community activity center, which is an area where you have multiple subdivisions that kind of utilize the services contained there. And the regional activity center, which they pull people from all across metro Atlanta to come in and use the goods and services that are provided there. So that's what those three different categories are. This particular code would only apply towards the two larger ones, the community and the regional activity center, sir.
And would you also explain this, the second point about the, the point, price points?
Yes, the, the price points, basically, the area median income is a figure determined by HUD, which is the federal government's Housing and Urban Development Program. They come out with a price point, oh, they, they come out with an average wage for families of different sizes. So depending on how large your family is, they determine what the AMI, or average median income, is for that particular family size.
Done by zip code or?
It is done by region, sir.
By region.
So we are in the Atlanta, Sandy Springs, Roswell region, as well as Decatur and Henry County and Clayton County and all of the other metro Atlanta.
So that, that, that area is that big?
Yes, sir.
Really, seriously?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Sure.
I know I asked the question, Dana. I guess as I think about this section a little bit more, I am very curious to know how you constrain the price point of the home.
There was a very lengthy discussion-
Otherwise, you end up back in the same situation.
We had a very lengthy discussion about this and I think before we can accurately answer your question, I think this, Ms. Dance's staff and I and Ms. Dance are going to kind of put our heads together and try to address some of the questions that came up yesterday. And we will come back with the full board to let them know about some of the concerns. We'll certainly brief you, Commissioner, on, on the discussions that occurred yesterday.
Okay.
There were some legal issues that we, we were constrained by and we're very aware of those. We almost just yanked that off.
Okay.
Because of the, the practice here, removing that from the stipulations because it's, first of all, an illegal, so.
Interesting.
Okay. That is, that's the end of the presentation. I just wanted to let the public know that we have two public hearings in regard to this. The first one is, as soon as I finish talking, sir, and you open the public hearing. The second one will be on January the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock. After that second public hearing, the board may, at any time, approve any of these code changes that have been brought forward here. Is that what I, I thought I said, did I say January? I did mean to say February twenty-seventh at seven o'clock. Thank you, Commissioner, for correcting me.
All right, so I'm going to call this public hearing open now. I just want to give everybody the guidelines. You're all, you're, there's an unlimited number of speakers and you're all limited to talk two, three minutes. And you don't need to stand up because that means someone behind you can't see you. So just grab a seat and I'll call you up. I'll, I guarantee everyone who wants to talk tonight will get a, will get a chance to talk. everyone who wants to talk tonight will get a chance to talk. All right? So please grab a seat so the person behind you can watch Ron give his points. For that, please give us your name and kind of where you live, and then you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Siphon. I live in Vannings. Appreciate Dana working with me, as well as all the community advocates that worked with me on this. It was really a team effort. Let me start with the whole issue that you all discussed yesterday and this evening about the price points regarding revolving around area median income. There was one area where Dana and I disagreed. I never thought we should be attempting to address this in that manner. I look at how we address, in any zoning issue, if we want upscale homes, we put stipulations in there. It's got, we're not trying to address the price points, but we put stuff in there that the homes are going to have these features, and it's going to result in homes of the character that's expected. I thought we should take the same approach with this ordinance. My recommendation of the way that we achieve the type of house that we want is by using a maximum house size. So my recommendation is, for a two-bedroom home, we have a maximum house size of 1,400 square feet. For a three-bedroom home, we have a maximum house size of 1,600 square feet. And for a four-bedroom home, we have a maximum house size of 1,800 square feet. I think that's the more effective and more appropriate way to wind up with the type and character of home that we're trying to achieve in this ordinance. One of the, I guess, roles that I played in this process was, how do we address the concerns that neighborhoods are going to have about where this is going to go? So one of the things that's in here is, this cannot go in an area that's RR or LDR or VLDR or NAC. It's restricted to only community activity center, regional activity center, and high-density residential, with the exception, it can go on the edge of a medium-density residential area as long as it is also adjacent to commercial. So, or adjacent to a CAC or a RAC. So it can go on that edge. And really and truly, if we think about where the, one of the places where something like this is likely to go is, let's say that we've got someplace that we have failed retail, and it's adversely impacting the surrounding community anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Siphon. That's your time.
If we get a development like this, it may be an enhancement to that community, and it may be, it may be welcomed by that community. So thank you.
By the way, Ron, those are some good ideas. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connie Jackson, and I am president of the Cobb County Association of Educators. And I'm here to represent teachers and educators in Cobb County. We were, proposed this idea a couple of months ago, and we were very excited. One of the problems that we have with keeping quality educators in Cobb County is that we are priced out of the housing market. Teachers, I don't know a lot about those RACs and CACs and all that, but teachers don't make a lot of money. And I know really well that. And it's hard to find a house anymore in Cobb County that's not $250,000, $300,000, $400,000. And teachers don't make that. And so we need quality, affordable housing in Cobb County. And I think that this initiative will be just that. Teachers don't want to have to travel from, you know, Clayton or Cherokee or Paulding to teach in Cobb when you can teach in those areas. And when you're talking about money, it's not worth it if those same counties are paying the same thing to travel. Now Cobb is the best. I strongly believe that. But if we can't afford to live here, it gets harder to want to teach here. This initiative would allow teachers to be able to buy and live in the county and the communities that they want to teach in. I have, my career when I was teaching has always been in South Cobb. And I believe in investing in areas that teachers want to be in. And this would allow teachers to buy and settle and bring value to our communities where we teach and want to live. So as a member of this community and someone who represents teachers, we are in favor of this, and we would love to see this go into effect. And we would love to see incentives for people like educators and first responders who can't afford to live currently in Cobb be able to move into these kind of houses. Thank you.
Your comments.
Good evening. I'm Sally Riddle, live in District Commission Number Four. And I'm also here to speak in favor of the workforce housing zoning changes. I was actually part of a feedback group that Ron used as far as different aspects of this program. And I think many people may be surprised to find out that median income that was talked about earlier for this geographic area is around $60,000 a year. In addition to many of our teachers not making that amount, you're used to me coming talking about public safety issues, and many of our public safety officials also do not make that amount. And one of the problems that we've had through time is maintaining those employees, retention. And so, again, if somebody can live closer to their work, and I've been in that situation in the past, certainly can make a difference. I also agree with Ron's idea that one of the ways to be able to help enforce that they stay in the proper economic area that we want them to be as far as the income is, again, to limit the sizes of the houses. I was very surprised to hear one of our public planning commission members several months ago say that he didn't agree with particular housing that was being proposed because it was less than 2,000 square feet for the house. And I was like, man, when did that magic number come into play? I grew up in a house a lot less than 2,000 square feet. The first couple of houses I owned were a lot less than 2,000 square feet. And so that is one way of being able to encourage the more moderately priced housing, is the suggestion that Ron had around 1,400 square feet or so for a two-bedroom home, 1,600 square feet for a three-bedroom, and 1,800 square feet for a four-bedroom. To be able to keep that footprint small enough that it can still be economically viable for a developer to build and sell the houses at the price that will still fit for our working-class housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lance Lamberton. I'm chairman of the Cobb Taxpayers Association. And on behalf of our members, I'm here to ask that you do not pass the OLAST resolution you are considering tonight.
Lance, this is about the code amendments.
Sorry?
You're going to be coming.
Then I'm in the wrong place?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
No problem. You'll get your chance. But I didn't want you to use all that time and then.
Well, let me capture that time back.
Okay, we can do that. We'll give that back to you, no problem. Is there anyone else that would like to talk on the code amendments?
Good evening. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. On the subject of the ordinances, the amendments before us, before you, I'd first like to address the commercial and industrial rehabilitation program. As it's presently written, a large portion of our community of Mableton would not be eligible for this incentive because Mableton Parkway, as well as some other smaller streets and roads in our community, do not have a corridor study. And most of the property along that road are also not on the redevelopment sites inventory. And as I look at that particular program, the commercial and industrial rehabilitation program, it seems to me to be aimed at smaller properties anyway, not so much at the larger properties that might ever be on the rehabilitation, I'm sorry, the redevelopment list. So I'm not certain of the fix for that. I don't know whether it is to get a corridor study done, or if it is to find a better way to define where it is we want to concentrate this incentive. But I do have to speak out for that big piece of my community. Next, on the economic development incentives, I'd like to ask you to add the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority in all of those incentives where the economic, where the Redevelopment Authority of Cobb County is able to exercise its powers. The South Cobb Redevelopment Authority has virtually all of those same powers and should be recognized as being able to participate in these county incentives as well. On the subject of the changes to the NRC code, you know I'm excited about anything that helps us deal with the overly concentrated situation we have with automotive uses in Mableton. I'm a little concerned, however, that the, that taking so many uses out of the NAC, out of the NRC code, may encourage property owners to petition to have their properties moved into CACs, and we'll be right back at the same spot that we are. So perhaps there's a way to look at it differently, to try to limit automotive uses around the edge of NRC districts, or limit automotive uses in NRC districts that are less than a certain size. I don't have an answer, but I do have a concern. Lastly, I'd like to endorse the codification of the zoning notification. I think that's great. And the 30-day notice for the letters going out, that couldn't be better. I can't tell you how often somebody gets a letter, given the post office delay and the delay in actually opening their mail. They find out a week before the hearing that something big is happening in their backyard, but it's a street they didn't drive down, so they didn't see the sign. That is just great. So thanks for these, for this opportunity, and thanks for taking a fresh look at these issues.
Thank you, Robin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Look, I feel as though we're in a particularly good place now. I've been in a number of meetings where this board has publicly confessed its love for public employees over and over again. But, you know, I'm really cautioned by the great lyricist Barry White, who did a nice ballad called, "Practice What You Preach."
You're not going to sing.
So here we.
You're not going to sing, are you?
No, I'm not going to do that. Just use that as.
Because if you are, I want to turn on my iPhone here.
Ms. Dance, detract him from my time, okay? I'd like to reclaim my time. All right.
Give you an extra 15 seconds, Ben.
Okay, we're going to barter. Go. But seriously, though, this is really an important point for a number of us who have worked with folk in the community, particularly public service employees. It's no secret to most of you that I am an advocate for policing in Cobb County. As my sister from the teachers' union came forth and spoke on behalf of teachers, I would like to take the liberty to speak on behalf of law enforcement folk. All of that I've read, conversations that I've been, that folk who live in their communities invest in their communities because it then becomes not a place just where I work, but also a place where I live. We relieve them from becoming day workers, that is, reporting to jobs and then going someplace else. The proximity works is terribly important. But also, the other economic piece, you live here and you invest more of the money that Cobb County pays you back into the place where you live. That is really key. That's really key. So I would really urge this board to look seriously at this code amendment, which is the gateway, because you know that if we can't get this code passed, then all that we want to do and we think and believe is for naught. Naught, okay? So Commissioners, take the key out your pocket, pass the code amendment, and open up the gate. Thank you so much.
Dr. Williams?
Good evening, Carol Brown, Canton Road neighbors. I'll try to get through this in three minutes. Section 2-171, business retention incentives for programs, incentives, item 10, acceleration of requests for zoning, rezoning hearings. This is not a good idea. It's going to upset the established order of things. Whoever it was that brought forward the changes to the NRC code, thank you so very much. Prior to 2010, all of those special exceptions were not there. And it has worked largely to our detriment on Canton Highway. We support this NRC code amendment. And once again, thank you for whoever brought this forward. I want to quickly try to address the new workforce housing amendment. It's a great idea. I want to bring some numbers out here because we've not heard them. The 2017 median family income for the Atlanta Sandy Springs MSA is $69,700. A very low-income four-person family, 50% of that would be $34,850. By comparison, the 2018 federal poverty level for a four-person family is $25,100. The ordinance proposes to accommodate those with incomes between 60 to 120% of the AMI, so that a four-person family earning 60% of AMI would have annual income of $41,820. 80% of AMI would have $55,760, and 120% of AMI would have income of $83,640. From the MIT Living Wage Calculator for Cobb County, which is available, you can find it at the Atlanta Regional Commission, a family of four adults, living wage would be $25.62. $11 per hour is a poverty wage, and the minimum wage here is $7.25 per hour. Typical housing expenses for the family would be $11,388 a year, and they would need an income of $53,293 before taxes, which equates to about 77% of AMI, the Atlanta Sandy Springs AMI, or MSA, excuse me. I understand that this is going to be a public initiative, or, excuse me, a private initiative, not funded by HUD, and it's not going to be rental, so there won't be any low-income housing tax credits. This is a very new approach, and I have, I'm not familiar with any standalone affordable subdivisions. The typical approach, in Atlanta, recently adopted a workforce affordable housing, and requires any developer receiving subsidies from a development authority to set aside 15% of units for individuals who make.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Okay. You have my comments, and.
Thank you for those numbers, too, Ms. Brown. Appreciate it.
Hi there. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Linda Carver. I live in District Two, but I am also the new president of the East Cobb Civic Association. So on behalf of ECCA, Jill Flam and I have some comments on several sections of code amendments that we have some questions or concerns about. We emailed a copy of those comments to you earlier today, and you should also have a hard copy that we provided you this evening. Before I start on that, though, I do want to thank the staff and everyone who clearly put a lot of time and thought into developing the amendments. And we appreciate the opportunity to provide input as well. There are several amendments, as some of the others have mentioned, that we are especially happy with. Tightening the requirements for notifying affected property owners of zoning hearings, reworking what is allowed in the neighborhood retail commercial district, and the lot size and road frontage variances going directly to the Board of Commissioners instead of going through the BZA. We also liked reducing the number of cars parked outside of homes from four to three, but that's been taken off, it appears. So perhaps for another time. One of the sections, though, that we do have some concerns about is the one on the recreational space. space community overlay district. The stated purposes of that overlay include, quote, "to provide for the preservation of green space," and, quote, "to decrease, to decrease the percentage of impervious surface." Some of this language is also reflected in the open space community category, so part of it, one of the concerns is that this RSC overlay allows for so much flexibility that it is likely to erode the use of the OSC. As open space is defined under Paragraph B3 of this amendment, RSC would allow for a variety of non-permeable surfaces that include all types of ball courts, such things as tennis, basketball, volleyball. It includes pool decking and even clubhouses, and the associated parking areas that go with those. Allowing for an increase in impervious surfaces for any reason does not promote many of the stated purposes of the overlay as they relate to green space. Another concern that we have is that developers have said they need at least 100 homes to support recreational amenities. This RSC overlay could encourage small subdivisions to put in recreational facilities when they really don't have the means to maintain, maintain them over the long term. We've seen this happen in many communities where it was unsupportable, and many times these facilities had to be sold. The bottom line is we're concerned about what could happen to subdivisions that are not prepared for the long-term support that those facilities require, and we're very concerned about the impact of an increase in impervious surface for the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam. I'm presenting the rest of East Cobb Civic Association's recommendations on the proposed 2018 code amendments. The first item I'd like to address are the new incentives that have now been added to the economic section of the code, and to the extent of which has now been defined. Courtesy of Mr. Johnson's presentation, we now understand that assistance with permitting and construction process means concierge service. However, with regard to Section 2-171, Business Retention, and 2-172, Targeted Industry, we also share the concerns with Canton Road neighbors that the acceleration of public hearing dates for all types of rezoning and variance requests have been added. What does this mean? How is this going to be communicated to the public who may have an interest in commenting on these requests? And finally, 2-173, Special Economic Impact Offers, in addition to the accelerated hearing dates, the acceleration of all aspects of the development review process. Who decides what these incentives are, and how will they be communicated to the public? Finally, with regard to Section 134-289, Workhouse, Workforce Housing, we do have some concerns with the way the code is written. Who is going to police this code? Who is going to look at if the required documents to prove AMI are there? To prove a person works in Cobb County, if so, for how long? Can you specify what type of job a person holds, i.e., service, without being discriminatory if somebody else wants to purchase a unit? What about if they live in Cherokee County or work in Cherokee County currently? Where and how often are the documents sent to the county by the developer? How do you ensure the 10% rental rule? How do you prevent flipping, i.e., buying a unit initially and then selling it at a higher rate shortly after purchase? Also, how are you going to enforce price points? What happens if these units don't sell? Now you have higher-density rentals in areas where, that the normal density would not allow it. If the intent is to use vacant or underutilized commercial areas, why not restrict it to established areas already targeted for redevelopment by the county? Otherwise, any area that's a CAC could be used in, for this housing in order to get a higher density into the area. And finally, who determines if a commercial area is underutilized? While establishing an HOA may provide initial protections for the neighborhood, it does not provide long-term protection, as the county cannot control whether an HOA continues to operate as it is a private enterprise. Finally, I do understand possibly why this is needed, but is this code specifically needed for workforce housing? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Morrison, and I'm the Senior Policy Analyst for the Council for Quality Growth. We're a trade association representing over 300 companies comprised of developers, residential and commercial builders, architects, law firms, planners, city planners, and engineers. I've emailed some comments to you earlier and provided you with hard copies as well, but I, I want to say I'm happy to be here tonight, and on behalf of our members speaking to the February 2018 code amendment cycle, we believe this code amendment package does much to enhance economic development in the county, and we're appreciative of Dana Johnson and his, and his team's efforts in getting this, uh, in, uh, cycle out there and, and working on. However, despite my jubilation, we do have concerns about the medical burn ban, the NRC restricted uses, and then the workforce housing proposal. So I'm here before you tonight to respectfully request that you remove the proposal expanding the medical burn ban to include outdoor fireplaces, chimeneas, and fire bowls. We believe that this is an unnecessary infringement on private property rights of the residents of Cobb County, and that it will devalue the current and future investments made in outdoor living spaces by builders and property owners. Additionally, we must request the removal of the amendments to the NRC districts. We view any limitation or prohibition on these convenience uses in these particular districts would lead to vacant commercial spaces and underutilization of these commercial lots, and further serve as, as an inconvenience to the residents of Cobb County. And then finally, because of the expertise of our members, the council is frequently engaged by policymakers in conversations surrounding workforce housing policies around the region. Our collection of builders, developers, and city planners recognize the pressing need for housing options geared towards individuals making below, at, or just above the area median income, and understand what is needed to make such housing options economically viable, both from a financing and housing, uh, excuse me, financing and business sustainability perspective. As Chairman Boyce said yesterday at the work session, the county is long overdue for kicking the can around. In fact, not just the county, but the region, the state, and regions and states around the country are, are long overdue to address these workforce housing issues. And so we applaud the county for taking the first steps necessary to ensure that, to ensure that housing options for our public servants, teachers, our firefighters, and other indispensable members of our community are, are being built. Sorry. What the workforce housing equation always boils down to, however, is making the pro forma work. Without the economic viability of these developments, financing cannot be secured, and these housing options simply cannot be built. An incentive-driven approach to affordable housing is the only way to guarantee the creation of this stock. And as was recognized at yesterday's meeting, it is financial incentives paired with appropriate density, appropriate density incentives that are crucial to the viability of these workforce housing. Permit fee reductions, process acceleration, sewer tie-in reductions, tax abatements, and other financial motivators directly impact the pro forma and balance the bottom line.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
To this end, we respectfully request that you delay further implementation of the workforce housing ordinance, and, and we're happy to work with you further on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Would anybody else like to address the issue? Okay, hey, David, come on up. Sure.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, County Manager. Happy to see some opposition tonight. Gets my blood pumping. Let me see if I can say this slow and clear, Mr. Chairman. Outdoor burning means kindling or maintaining a fire where the products are combustible or directly emitted into the ambient air without passing through a stack or chimney. Outdoor burning. Medical burn ban. The fire chief shall be authorized to ban outdoor burning and eliminate a geographical area upon receipt of a medical burn ban documentation from a resident that the resident has a medical condition adversely affected by smoke. Again, outdoor burning. It's not saying yard debris. It's not saying clean wood. It's talking about outdoor burning. Y'all are getting this all confused and just totally blown out of proportion. I watched yesterday, today, and I was here at 1:30, I saw Mr. Chairman Ott, because the form I got from Community Development was for the 23rd. So even though they ma, he emailed me the form, I wasn't emailed that it changes to the 22nd. So, but anyway, the firepans, Fire Marshal, the stipulation on the medical burn ban, Fire Marshal and Public Service, Mr. Heaton, they come to the conclusion on how to change the medical burn ban. From outdoor burning, and they say, oh, well, it's just yard debris. What does it say, yard debris? It doesn't say nothing about yard debris in the ordinance. Nothing. So to make everybody happy, they done the firepans, firepans. Okay. Recreational fires. The state don't even recognize fire pits and all this. They say recreational fires. That's it. I, I emailed some information to Mr. Ott today, uh, because, Commissioner Cupid, I hope your father is fine, uh, because I didn't know she was gonna be here. And I sent some over some good information. And it's got information in there that these people don't want to tell you about. That's the ingrained mentality I've been talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Birkenbain. Anybody else like to talk about the code amendments? Comment on them? Seeing now, now, I now declare this public hearing at a close, and we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess, and then go on to Tab, uh, Tab 7. Because if you all speak for five minutes, that means it'll be 10 o'clock before we start the rest of the agenda, which is fine. All right? Well, at least with me, because I'd be, I'm, I'm full-time. So, anyway, so we're gonna start now with public comments, and the first speaker is Ms. Dance.
The first speaker is Pat Burns, if you come forward.
Pat Burns, please. Hello, Pat.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns. I live beside the newly renovated Covered Bridge. Cobb County has, has only a few small slivers of historic lands left to be saved from developers. This includes a small lot in the Covered Bridge Historic District. Approximately six months ago, Jim McCutcheon, who lives in the Rock House, and I learned of a plan to insert an incompatible, out-of-size, let me repeat, out-of-size building into the Historic District within feet of the Rock House. In addition, there appeared to be glaring irregularities by the Historic Preservation Planner and Commission in following procedures that included informing the neighborhood and friends of the Covered Bridge about the COA. This total disregard, this total disrespect and disdain for those of us who live in the neighborhood is reminiscent of the secrecy surrounding the Brave Stadium. We felt betrayed by the very entity we thought would serve and protect us. There's a television commercial you may know. A man sits in a dentist's chair. The examiner's exclaims, "Wow, that's the biggest cavity I've ever seen." And he turns away. The patient asks, "Aren't you gonna fix it?" The examiner says, "Oh, no, I'm not a dentist. I'm a dental monitor." Unfortunately, that appears to be the role of the Historic Preservation in Cobb County: monitoring instead of supporting preservation. Ironically, we, the friends, have always felt CDOT was our adversary. Unfortunately, I mean fortunately, that totally changed when they embraced repairing the Covered Bridge. Now CDOT is my new best friend. Never did we imagine that the threat of possible destruction of the district would be, would be conceived and fomented from within, in the form of a COA aided by the Historic Preservation Planner. This leaves the district in peril of losing its designation as a Historic District, as well as disqualifying Cobb County from acquiring another distinguished preservation honor, the placement of the National Register of Historic Sites. What are the values of Historic Preservation for Cobb and elsewhere? Fortunately, on rare occasions, exceptional preservation is embraced. It transforms and transcends what builders and developers initially planned for space. For example, the Silver Comet Trail and Heritage Park were actually to be the route of the East-West Connector. The Fox Theater was to be the Southern Bell's office building. Marietta Strand Theater was barely saved by Earl Smith. Freedom Park's organizer held up the Presidential Parkway, preventing the raising of Inman Park and old Atlanta neighborhoods. Even New York's Grand Central Station was saved by Jacqueline Kennedy and other preservationists. These areas slated for development or destruction became destinations, places of pride, places of community. Creative preservation is a visionary team effort, one that can be picked apart narrowly, or one that expands visions and horizons like the Atlanta Belt Line. Even trail possibilities exist from the Riverline to the Covered Bridge Historic District. You, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, without being aware of it, became members of this creative preservation and visionary team when you voted to repair the Covered Bridge. Without knowing it, with that vote, you apply the Secretary of Interior's Standards for Rehabilitation, the guideline for Historic Preservationists. The standard states, "It is not recommended introducing new buildings or landscape features" Thank you, Ms. Brown. "...that are out of scale or otherwise inappropriate to the settings of historic character." Keep in mind-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Keep in mind-
I'm sorry, ma'am. We have a very full schedule tonight, and I-
Thank you.
I asked you for your, for your support. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Birkenbain.
What? My gosh.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, County Manager. This is what I propose, is coming up on the screen. I propose on 54-113 to totally do away with this ordinance to the fact that it makes outdoor medical burn ban unenforceable. Also, 54-113F should be removed because of the nature of burning of the materials involved. Smoke would be toxic. The device, the device as mentioned in 54-113, a chimney fire bowl device at outdoor fireplaces should fall underneath recreational fire, for this section covers the use of fire for pleasure, religious ceremonial, cooking, warp, or similar purpose. So why do we need these chimneys and fire bowls that are unregulated? I'll tell you why. Because under recreational fires shall not be located within 25 feet of a structure or a combustible material. Condition which could cause a fire to spread within 25 feet of a structure shall be eliminated prior to ignition. Burning is allowed from 10 to 10:30 p.m. So they, they won't be able to take and put their chimneys on their back deck, the wooden back deck that doesn't have a fire screen. They could put their fire bowl out there on their back deck without a fire screen on top of it. They can take and throw up a pit anywhere in the backyard, even if they have trees up above them that's got a overhang, just like I spoke before this year. But in Section 54-112, outdoor fireplace should be stricken since the people's definition of fireplace has changed from outdoor burning. With the implementation, the more devices being used for outdoor burning. So they're gonna call anything a fireplace, anything they want to call a fireplace. Other special circumstances as determined by the Fire Marshal, this, in 54-115- Other special circumstances as determined by the Fire Marshal, this in 54-115 should be excluded totally for the medical burn ban. In Section 54-114, there should not be any exceptions for this prohibition of the ordinance. And what I'd like to see under the safeguards and limitations of outdoor burning is we need to add a subsection to the above ordinance, 54-116, and it should state that if you live in a medical burn ban area, you will be required to extinguish any and all outdoor burning in this thousand-foot radius if people with a medical burn ban are affected, if they're affected, if they call, they smell it, they're affected. Sure, they spent money on their chimneys, they spent money on it, but people with medical problems spend money every day. It's not a one-time deal where I spent $10,000 on a fireplace. This is every day. And even though how long ago, that one statement, you asked me how long ago my experience was, it doesn't make any difference. It cost me a chunk. It cost me more than a fireplace, it cost me more than a fire pit, it cost me more than a chimney, just because the definition of outdoor burning was changed to clean wood, yard debris, and the stipulations for having a medical burn ban was changed by Public Service, the Fire Marshal, and the Fire Chief. They thought they run a slick one. Remember you said, we can't do it, we got to get all the HOAs out here, we got to have them in here. I welcome them, I welcome all 5,000 of them. I've been waiting for this for three years, because I've told other people, I said, where are these people? How come, how come they're not here? And that's in 2015. Finally, one showed up today. Fantastic. I love it. But when you set that fire and you're next to me and that smoke comes on my property, then you're in my bubble, as far as I'm concerned. You are invading my space with your smoke. So until you can stop that smoke from coming into my space by getting propane logs or whatever you want to get to justify your out there burning, then do so. But until then, we have got to stop this. And it's not clean wood, dirty wood, or whatever, it's outdoor burning of material going to ambient air. And like I said before, it causes micro pollutants into the air as big as a red blood cell, which however big that is, it gets into the lungs, causes bronchitis. I mean, you know, we want to worry about people with these diseases and take care of them. Let's start right here. It's time to stop kicking the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
The next speaker is Patricia Hay.
I don't know if it's my turn, because I'm speaking on what Lance Lambert wanted to speak on.
Sure. You've got five minutes.
Okay. I thought it was less than that.
To talk whatever, any topic you want to.
Oh, okay. I wanted to speak on Commissioner Weatherford's proposal to increase our sales tax from 6% to 7% for the Cobb County Public Safety. And I wanted to ask a question. What's going to be done with the money that you were using to fund the Cobb County Public Safety? I think it, I believe it's 100 million, 134 million. I know some of it could be going to fund our 30 million deficit, but where's the rest of the money going to go to? That's one question. And Commissioner Boyce, he says we've cut everything from our budget, but my eyes tell me otherwise when I go to Cumberland and see those buses that are empty, the circulator buses, and I see them all the time, and they're huge buses. And why are you, why did you make roundabouts? Why do you make all these medians that we don't need, where we can't turn left? Why are you giving nonprofits or charities 1.2 million when that isn't the government's job? Do you represent us, the citizens and taxpayers, or are you representing the Chamber of Commerce or the Liberty Media with the Braves? That's really not the best way to restore our trust. And I'm asking you to, also changing the, charging the seniors for fees, it's also like, almost like raising taxes. And I don't understand why you're charging for the parking decks that should have already been paid for. And the only one last comment, other than asking you to vote no on his proposal, is I thought Republicans stood for limited government and lowering taxes. I must have been mistaken on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mac Parnell.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to come bring greetings from Congressman Lautermilke. I'm here on his behalf. He has four offices, one in Washington, D.C., of course, and then he has one in Woodstock, Cherokee, so of course Cherokee County, he has one in Cobb, down in the Galleria, and he has one in Cartersville, too. And we're here to offer any assistance that you need. If any of your constituents or any people come to you and they need assistance with any federal agencies, our office is equipped to help and can offer inquiries on their behalf. So please, please feel free to reach out. You can reach us on our website, lautermilke.house.gov. Also, I gave you all a little packet earlier. We have these cards. It discusses some of the services that we offer, assistance with the Internal Revenue Service, military and veterans issues, Social Security, anything that any of your constituents might run into. So please feel free to share that with any of your constituents that might come to you with questions. Thank you so much, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Mac. Appreciate you coming by tonight. Thanks to Congressmen for all he does for us.
The next speaker is Ron Siphon.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Siphon. I want to discuss the proposed $138 million tax increase to cover the projected $30 million shortfall for next year. We can play whatever shell game we want about moving public safety out and calling that a certain number of dollars, we're going to give, the cities are going to get a certain number of dollars. For right now, I'm going to use your numbers that you projected, that you presented yesterday. If you take $96 million out of the budget and you've got a $30 million shortfall, you've got $66 million just sitting there rattling around that hasn't been addressed, that's what I'm calling a slush fund. This is, there are a lot of ways that this, that the $30 million shortfall could be addressed, including a sales tax, it could be an O-Lost, it could be a Lost, it could be a Host. But if you all come up with a plan where you've got a $30 million shortfall, and even if you wanted to take that and add to it, let's take out the one-time costs and just look at what does public safety need on an annual basis, once we catch up on vehicle replacement and other stuff we need to catch up on, because there's a way that that can be handled separately. But what's the actual legitimate ongoing extra money that public safety needs? Let's even say it's $10 million. I think it's probably less, but let's say you need an extra $10 million for that. So we're up to $40 million. You all come up with a plan that even if it's a, even if it's a tax, you have a different conversation. I'm not going to tell you everybody's going to support that plan, but you're going to have a very different conversation if you are trying to raise an additional $40 million of tax to cover a demonstrable $40 million need, and you all will need to demonstrate it. You'll have a very different conversation with the public about that than if you're proposing $138 million tax to cover a $30 million shortfall. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce and Commissioners. I am Roberta Cook from Mableton. I'm speaking today as Executive Director of the Riverline Historic Area. And the subject of my speech is the, as you can see on the screen, the Chattahoochee Riverline Battlefield Preservation Plan. The plan was produced in 2014 by a cultural resource consultant named Thomason and Associates with a grant from the National Park Service. This plan involves a six-mile Civil War battlefield that's highlighted in gray on this map. It's aligned with the Chattahoochee River, covering parts of Vinings, Smyrna, and Mableton. It joins Commissioner Ott's District Two with Commissioner Cupid's District Four. This plan coincides with the geographic borders of the Riverline Historic Area and complements our mission, which is at the top of the map, for preserving historic and natural resources, which makes our nonprofit a primary stakeholder. The Board of Commissioners has a significant role in bringing the preservation plan to fruition. Your most recent contribution is the six acres of land on Veterans Memorial Highway purchased just two months ago with park bond funding. This completes a 28-acre assemblage of historic property labeled Howell's Mill, right here on our Riverline map. And notice it's along Nigga Jack Creek. At the other end of Nigga Jack Creek, outside of the Riverline Historic Area, as Pat mentioned earlier, the Board of Commissioners invested in the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District by funding the rehabilitation of the Concord Covered Bridge. All these historic sites, starting from the south of Johnson's Riverline Park, working our way up to Howell's Mill, and to Heritage Park, the Concord Covered Bridge, which is aligned with the Silver Comet at the north. It all adds up to a historic walking trail. With the right kind of marketing, this trail has tourism potential, but will require thoughtfulness and vision continuity to achieve it. Future decisions by the Board of Commissioners will either strengthen or weaken the building blocks of historic preservation that foster quality of life for Cobb County residents and tourism for economic development. In closing, please consider the 2013 Blue, Gray, and Green Report, which found the average family of four visiting a Civil War battlefield spends $1,000 on their trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta.
The next speaker is Neva Mullenberg.
Good evening. I'm not here to talk about the budget, that should make you happy. I'm here to talk about code violations, which I'm hoping Dana Johnson is still here. I sold a piece of property, as you can see up on the board. My house is to the right, it's a one-acre lot. To the left is another one-acre lot. They're on the same elevation. The topo shows them on the same elevation with the county topo, and they were. My neighbor must have hit rock, I'm not sure what happened, but they built up the elevation 12 feet higher where the houses are supposed to sit. And they put this brick wall, thank you, they put, or this concrete wall, which was at the time eight and a half feet above our elevation. So I walk out of my house, go into my front yard, and I look at an eight-foot wall. They were kind of stucco this wall, but then they ended up breaking the wall. But the footers, as you can see, go ahead to the next one, the footers are above ground, which blows my mind because they're not stable. This wall was installed, and while I was in communication with Dana, with the County Attorney's Office, Pat Riley and Lee McCleod, before Lee McCleod retired, letting them know that this foundation of this wall that is holding back, I don't know how many tons of dirt, the backfill, and I'll get off topic for a second, but the backfill was supposed to have a permit for soil disturbance, and it did not. The wall is supposed to be certified by an engineer that designed the wall. It is not certified, won't certify. Albert Engineering designed the wall and refused to certify it because it wasn't inspected during the three phases by law Cobb County requires. So forgive me if I lose track, for I have a little chemo fog going on right now, but-
Could you just tell me, what district do you live in?
I live in District One.
Oh, okay.
And so what is happening is there are tons and tons of dirt is going onto my property, it's pitched to my property, draining, it's going into my septic drain field. My retention wall is on the right-hand side. That piece of land between those two retention walls was the elevation of the land to the left. And it is built up 12 feet. And these folks that live in this house have three young children, so if they're on a skateboard or a bicycle and they go over that wall, they're going to drop a legal story of a building 12 feet, they're going to go down 12 feet. And there's no railing, nothing up there. And the wall, by law, is supposed to only be six feet high, providing it's within five feet of the property line with landscaping buffer, so I don't have to go out and look at this wall. That was number one. Number two is when this property was originally zoned by the Board of Commissioners' approval zoning, there is a five-foot setback on each side of this property to where it would accommodate the water draining because of the type of topo that was existing, we could not disturb it, and we had a tree save. While this was being constructed, I was in communication with the board, with the building official, and he assured me in writing that none of this would happen without all codes being enforced. And I was just looking up online, the building official is to enforce the codes. And he assured me that the building, this property would not get a certificate to occupy if all of these codes were not followed. You can't enforce the code easily when you haven't even permitted the backfill. And the soil disturbance is a huge issue because these folks have a septic drain field in front of their house, and when you look at their property, they drained it to the left and to the right. Everything to the left is draining into their own septic drain field, which, you know, what comes out into the drain field does not ever flow up, it always flows down. And 40% of their septic drain field is uphill. So when it rains, and we get a good rain, I have four to five inches of standing water in my front yard and my backyard, and I can't go into that water. I can't walk my dog easily, and I can't access my yard. It's flooding my septic drain field, and when you have a compromised immune system, it's a problem, number one. Number two, it's devaluing my land. And all of this was going on while, Mrs. Dance, your office was aware of it in writing prior to, and Mr. Ott, you were included on a couple of the emails with Lee McCleod. And at the time, I was dealing with a medical issue, still am, but when they gave the certificate to occupy, the certificate says, the affidavit from the building official says that the codes were substantially complied with versus absolutely complied with. And so they gave them the certificate to occupy, which takes a jurisdiction from you folks and puts it on me, and now I'm in litigation with these people and having to pay for legal fees.
Your time is up, but the key thing is, your commissioner is Commissioner Weatherford. So I need to, see the lady on the very end there in the, in the blue dress?
Yes.
Shannon Woody, please give her your address, and I'll guarantee you, this commissioner will be on it.
Okay.
But if you live in District One, all right, that's who your commissioner is.
Yeah.
All right, so please give Shannon your address and your contact information, and I'll guarantee you, they'll get, they'll jump right on it.
Thank you.
Because your point's well made. I appreciate the pictures, I wish everyone came with this kind of graphic evidence, so... I appreciate the pictures, I wish everyone came with this kind of graphic evidence, so, but I can assure you, we will, we will, we will start working on this tomorrow, see what the issues are.
Thank you.
And the Commissioner here is very good about taking care of these kind of issues.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry about what happened, but you now have the right Commissioner here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Amikas. Lisa Amikas, or Amikas. The next speaker then is Gary Pelfrey.
You're left. He's gone.
Okay, and the final speaker then is Lance Lambertton.
Good evening Commissioners, sorry I missed my cue the last time. Reintroduce myself, I still have some time. Lance Lambertton, Chairman of the Cobb Taxpayers Association, and I'm basically here to talk against the resolution before you, the Olast that you're considering tonight, and the reason is simple, it will amount to a very, very large tax increase on our citizens like Ron Siphon mentioned, about $138 million per year. And as it has been said many times before, but unfortunately bears repeating over and over again, Cobb County really doesn't have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem. And to force this tax increase on us would constitute an abdication of your responsibility to operate and function within your ever-growing means. And I view this situation as analogous to what was going on during the Vietnam War era. It was called the credibility gap, where our government was not being straight with the people when it came to what was really going on with that war. Well, I believe we have a credibility gap when it comes to what we're being told with respect to the so-called budget gap. We're being told that we have somewhere between 30 and $55 million budget shortfall at a time when we had the largest tax digest in the county's history, and that our only options are tax increases or draconian cuts to vital services. I'm sorry, but I just can't, don't find that to be very credible. If that is the case, then why are you not demanding that the Braves pay for traffic control and security at the stadium? And why are you giving almost $1 million to nonprofits? Those are just two examples of the many sensible things you could do to help close the gap if indeed it does exist. And while I'm not suggesting that the county is deliberately misleading the public when it comes to the budget, it does appear that the interests of taxpayers are taking a backseat to the spending interests in the county. However, I welcome the opportunity for you to prove me wrong, and a good way to address this credibility gap is for the county to undergo a forensic audit. To do otherwise is to kick the can down the road by pursuing the easy expedient of a massive permanent tax increase. And when as a result, when as a result, government has such a massive infusion of additional tax revenue, it will find a way to spend every last dime. Then it will complain a few years down the road that we need yet another source of additional revenue for what it will call the funding of essential government services. We could put an end to this vicious cycle, and that can begin tonight by voting down the Olast Resolution and beginning the process of implementing a forensic audit. As taxpayers, we deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you Lance. Okay, we're going to go on to Tab Eight. And just from, to keep everybody in the loop here, item number 12 has been withdrawn from consent agenda. So we'll go to, is 12 still on there, Brad? So they can read it? Have we taken off already? Item number 12, so it's gone, okay, so not to worry about it. That's who checked the consent agenda from yesterday, we had a work session yesterday and agreed to pull it. So I'd like to go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda revised and authorized the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. No, we're just rewarding.
Second.
Yeah, we're just rewarding number one.
We added language to number one, there's a change to the agenda items.
Do we have a second and discussion? Further discussion?
Sorry, I'm hearing.
What we did, we revised the wording in number one, and we pulled item number 12.
Okay. Changes to number one reads?
I'm sorry?
The changes to number one are?
Steve McCullers, you here? Come on up.
Yeah, I never seen the revision.
Yeah, we got it, there's a.
It's a pain.
Thank you.
You go ahead and explain.
I just got the revisions, Steve, so I'm just reviewing it. I know you don't have the text.
Okay, I don't have the item with me at the moment.
So just hang, just hang right there. She has any questions, she can ask you. Though, matter of fact, Commissioner Ott had some concerns yesterday, why don't you just go ahead and give us a summary, Commissioner Ott?
Right, basically, Commissioner Cupid, yesterday, I just asked why we were spending money to lose money, that's the way I worded it yesterday, because by giving away the money for the toilets, we're actually reducing the amount of water that's used. But what the first paragraph does is explain that there is a lot of benefit to the county in reducing the water use, and it basically, the first paragraph explains why it's important to reduce the water use, even though on initial look, it would be that we were losing money by, you know, paying the rebate for the toilets, but first paragraph goes and explains why it's important, more important to reduce the amount of water that the county uses, because going into, if we go into another drought condition, you know, we need to preserve that resource.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I think, good job Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I call the question. Pass the five to zero. All right, now we're on to Tab Number Nine.
Good evening Chairman Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, we have five items tonight. The first item is to approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Sun Coast Restoration and Waterproofing LLC for installation of enhanced warning signs on Concord Road Covered Bridge. Bridges and covers is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. The Concord Road Covered Bridge Rehabilitation Project consists of extensive repairs. These repairs are due to the frequency of vehicle impacts resulting from drivers not properly observing existing warning signs. Supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Sun Coast Restoration and Waterproofing LLC in an amount not to exceed $85,343.20 is requested for installation of radar-controlled detection system with enhanced over, overheight warning signs on both sides of the bridge. In addition, a contract time extension through May 11th, 2018 is also requested to allow for the completion of the additional work. So we request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Sun Coast Restoration and Waterproofing LLC in an amount not to exceed $85,343.20 for installation of enhanced warning signs on Concord Road Covered Bridge.
Mr. Cupid.
Yes, motion to approve.
Second. There was second, any discussion? Call the question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number two is to approve project number X-2729 to the 2016 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. for Heritage Court Sidewalk. Sidewalks is an approved component in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Project number X-2729 to the 2016 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., the lowest responsible unit price contractor in an amount not to exceed $18,397.40 is requested for pedestrian improvements on Heritage Court. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X-2729, the 2016 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $18,397.40 for Heritage Court Sidewalk.
Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Call the question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number three is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for safety and operational improvements on West Sandtown Road. West Sandtown Road is an approved roadway safety and operational improvements project in the 2005 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a savings to the project in an amount of $497,574.4 is requested due to variations between the original and final quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a savings to the project in an amount of $497,574.4 for safety and operational improvements on West Sandtown Road.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. If you would, explain to the public where this money goes back. I know some goes back to the water system, but this now, this is.
It'll go back into 2005 SPOS. We've got a couple things we're still trying to clean up there.
Okay, so this goes back into that bucket?
Mm-hmm.
And then come back for approval where it's used, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? Call the question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number four is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for intersection improvements on Johnson's Ferry Road at Goldberg's CVS Pharmacy. Johnson's Ferry Road at Goldberg's and CVS Pharmacy is an approved project in the intersection component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $17,519.79 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $17,519.79 for intersection improvements on Johnson's Ferry Road at Goldberg's and CVS Pharmacy.
Commissioner Ott.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Call the question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is to approve change order number one to the utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company for additional costs associated with preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch. Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of this project now requires a crane for pile driving during bridge replacement, which was not originally anticipated. Georgia Power Company's facilities will need to be moved temporarily during this phase of construction. Change order number one final to the URA with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $22,010 is requested for additional construction labor costs required to complete the transmission locations for the project. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in the amount not to exceed $22,010 for additional costs associated with preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Brookwood Drive over Clay Branch.
Commissioner Cupid.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Call the question? Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks Jim. All right, Tab Number Ten.
Good evening Chairman Commissioners, County Manager. Here tonight to authorize, asking to authorize pay adjustments for police sergeants and lieutenants. When the pay-in-class study was implemented in June of 2017, the pay grades for police officer two to police sergeant went from a two-step grade to a five-step grade, and that caused some pay inconsistencies to our existing police sergeants and lieutenants once the first promotion was made under the new system. We propose to correct this by increasing the existing pay for the existing sergeants and lieutenants. And if we do this effective February 25th, it will have a $495,000 impact on FY19, I mean 18 budget. Moving forward annually, it will cost $841,000 to make this an annual fix. The funding is available with our reserve school bus funds, and therefore I'm asking or recommending that Board of Commissioners authorize the transfer of funds in the amount of $495,000 for pay adjustments for police sergeants and lieutenants, and authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you Sam, hold on one second. Before, before I give, I'll tell you what, I'm going to have Commissioner Weatherford give the motion, get a second, and I want to read something that I've been gotten, addresses the issue for police, for the Sheriff's Department.
We've had many discussions on this, and we think this is the way to go, is, so motion to approve is presented.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? All right, so I just, before we start the discussion, I just want to read this, and then we'll open the floor up for discussion. As we prepare to address this item, first Director Heaton, about the offsets for police sergeants and lieutenants, I want to inform everyone that we'll be addressing the same recommendation for deputy sheriff sergeants and lieutenants at our next meeting on February 12th, 2018. The Board has committed to public safety in treating all of our sergeants and lieutenants equitably. It should be noted that the item we approve for police sergeants and lieutenants tonight, as well as the annual concern for deputy sheriff sergeant and lieutenants on February 12th, will both have an effective date of February 25th, 2018. So with that, I'll start with Commissioner Burl, you have a comment? And we'll just work our way around the table here.
Commissioner Ott may have answered my question, but for next year, for 19, with the 800, will the funding come from the stop-arm funds?
Quite honestly, I doubt that those funds will be in stop-arm next year. I have discussed some possible options going forward, and so with that.
So we, we have a plan of where?
Yes, ma'am.
The 800,000 for the 19 budget will come from?
Yes, ma'am.
Other than the general fund?
Short story, if, depending on what budget's approved for FY19, and that's a lot more work to be done there, I understand that, but we do, talking with Chief Kreider, looking at his five-year strategic plan, I do think we could possibly take approximately .03 from the fire fund, transfer it to the general fund, but that does come with some, some possible situations as well.
So you would be lowering the millage rate for the fire fund, is that what you're looking at doing? Sure, go ahead, all right.
Those are some of the options, but as, as I mentioned yesterday, with the, the really positive numbers that we have from the stadium and the battery, the discussion that I've had with the chief is that I believe that there will be the revenue generated from the stadium and the battery that will cover the cost.
Oh, so we'll be, that'll be offset, so money we're paying right now to the general fund, that we'll not be using that?
There will be offsets either with the way that police is paid for at the stadium and/or the additional revenue that is anticipated, you know, like we said yesterday, we're probably anticipating three to four million dollars additional revenue above and beyond the costs next year for the stadium. So the discussion we've had, instead of starting moving millage and all of that around, I believe we should be able to pay for it that way. Yes, sir. I would just say that we've looked at several options, there's not one identified 100%, but there, there, I feel comfortable we'll have to fund it.
Commissioner Weatherford.
And as we discussed, we haven't ruled out the same funding source next year, just depends on what the legislative, what the legal opinion is on stop-arm usage, and there seems to be some momentum to make sure that's re-implemented, correct?
Correct.
And that's, that's a, that's a fund that we can use for this, if we need to in the future.
For the, say it again Commissioner.
The stop-arm dollars.
Sure, I mean, yes, I mean, that, that does have to build back, and we just signed the one-year contract, so we'll see where that goes back to. So we're draining that fund now with this, if we do that this time?
Yeah, the 841,000 that we anticipated for the annual cost?
Right.
Is in the stop-arm fund, so the 495, for any reason, we got near the end of the budget year and it wasn't there, we could pull some additional, I'm not planning on spending that, and then if we don't use it, we could supplement whatever other ways next year with the same things, yes, sir.
So let's see if I understand this, for the cost between one, between the end of February and the first of October is how much, 400?
400, approximately 495,000.
Right, and so is that times two, because we're going to include the Sheriff's Department in?
No, sir, these funds, this is not for police, this is for police.
I get that part, but we're going to be talking about the sheriff next, next meeting, where's that money going to come from?
There would be a couple of different options that we'll be discussing with the Board as it relates to the sheriff. Mr. Chairman, there was a request for some mobile data terminals that the sheriff had included in their operating funds that we believe we're going to be able to, similar to what Director Heaton is proposing, we'll shift those funds from the sheriff's budget or leftover monies to absorb or address the.
So that, but that's his money anyhow, we've already budgeted that.
That's correct.
That's his money.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, so.
Just, and this is more for Commissioner Cupid, because I know she wasn't here yesterday, but just to kind of reiterate the numbers from yesterday, it was 851,000, give or take, for police at the stadium. With the change in the operational procedures, we anticipate that to go down to 600,000, and we also anticipate paying for that from stadium revenue instead of the general fund, so that will free up 851,000 that came out of the general fund this year. So that amount of money would cover the police, and then the additional revenue that's anticipated, like we talked about yesterday with the change in property values, because they were based on construction values, we're looking. were based on construction values, um, we're looking at two-to-three-million-dollar increase in taxes from that, which would all be going into the general fund.
I know, but I'm giving Commissioner time, because she wasn't here yesterday, you know, she's thinking.
You know, no, no decision on this board is easy. I'm, I'm, I'm just at a, a loss for this, because, um, certainly you want employees to be paid with purity to, with respect to their peers. But this is in complete contradiction every principle that we say that we try to operate by is to pay for ongoing, um, expenses with ongoing revenue, and this is not even a minor amount. This is eight-hundred and, oh, four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand is coming from a one-time source without any guarantee for how we're gonna pay for it in the next years, and then when I hear about projected income and restraining that income for this purpose as opposed to any other purpose that is being considered in that thirty-to-fifty-five-million-dollar shortfall, I just can't even understand the logic of even going there. I mean, we have so many expenses to pay for this county and making this type of decision right now without having a more, um, reliable source of income that's going to be an ongoing source of income, it's, I just, it seems just completely ill-timed, and, um, I don't think that it takes into account just the great and broad need that we have in this county. So that's one thing that I have on my mind right now. Another thing is, you know, I wonder where else disparity exists in how we pay people here in Cobb County. Is it just constrained to the police department? Is it anyplace else? We talked about the sheriff's office. Is there that much elevation with these two departments that we would defy our tenet of paying for ongoing expenses with ongoing revenue? And even if we are willing to defy our own tenet and strategy for how we fund things, that still does not address the ongoing thirty-to-fifty-five-million-dollar shortfall, which only will balloon if we continue to make decisions like this. So while I think it's, it feels good and it's the right thing to do, I don't think that this is a decision that helps us to address the glaring, the glaring hole that we have right now. We just, in this meeting, said we are going to charge our seniors of this community, many of them with limited income, limited resources, and dire circumstances in additional fee. So we are, and that was to the tune of, what, six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand? And just in this meeting, we're gonna take that money, we're gonna put four, you know, really all of it is general fund money, whether you get it from the Braves or you get it from the seniors, you know, and we're gonna have an expense of four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. When do, when do we ever get out of this hole? Nothing, I just, I'm, I'm not seeing a path to getting there. I, I'm, I'm surprised to see this come forward at this time. I'm surprised to hear consideration of another item. I'm just, I'm, I'm almost had it with just, um, our approach to not addressing the real needs and, and issues on a holistic level and us making these one-off decisions like this. It's, it's, it's very frustrating, and I'm, and I'm not saying, again, that this is not needed, and I can only imagine the concern among officers and the frustration to see the lack of purity in pay, but we have a lack of purity all over the place right now, and I'm just this, this just seems to add to that.
Yeah, um, this kinda reminds me of Mayberry Park. Because there's a process, and I was trying, and I try to, to make sure that what we're doing aligns with the process, and, and I asked for Commissioner Burl's, uh, trust that I was gonna come back on Mayberry Park, uh, at the next meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that everything aligned in order so that we could, when we funded, when we approved Mayberry Park, that the money was in line for 2019, uh, that we wouldn't, you know, be, be having these issues like we did with the Sewell Mill Library. You know?
We approved that.
I know that. My point is, is that I, I, public safety is our number one priority, no question about it, but there's a way to do it. And we knew that we had put, uh, a placeholder in the, uh, in the 2019 discussions for the retreat to address, um, the compression issue. So I'm surprised that this is here right now. So what's happened here is the staff has put me in the uncomfortable situation of having to oppose this for procedural reasons, not for principle reasons, because I agree with Commissioner Cupid, we have a process here. We have the 2018 budget approved, and I thought it was very clear that when we start, when we passed the, the budget last fall after much, much agonizing discussion, uh, following on, uh, getting to the milledge rate, that we'd get through eighteen, uh, we were done, and then we move on to nineteen as the discussion. So, uh, I find myself in the camp with Commissioner Cupid here, that as much as I, in principle, understand why we need to do this, there is a time and a way to do this, and this is not the way to do it, because this is one-time money. And, uh, you can't have, you can't have the armor of one-time money for one thing and say there's an exception for something else. This is all one big ship, and it's guided by one set of policies, and to make an exception for this, um, means that everybody else in this budget should, should say, well, if you did it for them, then why not for me? And that's the same reason I had for the senior fees. We're all in this together. So I, the reason, part, part of the reason for the fees was that, while everybody's paying into it, then nobody can go back and say, well, they're getting a freebie. Well, in this case here, we are making exception to policy a significant amount, that actually we're committing ourselves for something in 2019 to the tune of a million dollars, because this only covers the, uh, police department, and then double that times the amount for the sheriff, and we haven't addressed that issue yet. So, um, I'm, I can say it here, I, I don't support this at this time, I think it's a time to do, way to do this, and this is not the time. Commissioner Burl.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I disagree. First of all, we have all said that public safety is number one priority. It is mandated, it is something that we have to provide, and we have sat here, you have come up with a list of recommendations, hiring frees, a, a number of things that I've told you I supported to come up with the shortfall, so that public safety is number one. So until we put our money where our mouth is, I'm sorry, but I support this now.
Except the police department is not a mandated, it's, it's an essential service. By our, by our chart, it's an essential service.
If, if someone calls nine-one-one, or the police are gonna come, and they have to by law.
I get that part.
It is a mandated service.
Uh, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go down and come back to you, Commissioner Weatherford.
Um, I have to agree with, uh, Commissioner Weatherford and Commissioner Burl. We cannot sit up here and say that public safety is number one priority and not, when identified, um, misstep in the paying class is identified, not fix it. This is the problem with the paying class. When we talked about the paying class, we said it was a boilerplate for DeKalb County. We didn't look at it carefully, it shouldn't have been passed because it has flaws. It covers forty-six percent of the employees, and what we are now seeing is the problem with paying class. But that is not fair to our public safety folks who've put their lives on the line and not compensate them for what they do. So this needs to be passed, and we have talked about the recurring money that'll come, that we had a briefing yesterday. The revenue from the Braves and the stadium is not one-time money, it's property tax money that goes into the general fund, so respectfully, I disagree with you.
Okay. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. I understand everyone's comments. Mr. Cupid in here, sir. The director and us have worked pretty hard to come up with a way to fund this without impact to the fund into the budget, and we also feel like we have a way going forward to get us through the eighteen, nineteen budget. Uh, our issue is, is, uh, we've all said, is retention. Now, we have lieutenants and sergeants that are making less than people with less tenure now, and if we continue to do that, we're gonna lose the sergeants and lieutenants to other agencies where they can go get more money, and the ones that have less tenure got promoted and stepping grade in the compression issue. So, as Commissioner Otten said, this was an issue with the paying class that we didn't anticipate, and we have a way to do that with impact to the budget now, and I know that it appears like we're kicking can down the road, but we feel like we have eighteen and nineteen covered, or we would not have brought this forward. So, you know, I support this in that regard, but I do understand your concerns.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes.
Is someone from finance here?
No, I didn't call the question. Not yet.
Yes, Commissioner?
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening.
Help me understand how we got four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars from salaries.
I'm sorry? The four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, that's from the implementation date to the end of the fiscal year. That's salary infringed for these, for this, or this is the adjustment for these positions.
For what positions?
For the, the sergeants and lieutenants that were impacted by the paying class.
Where is that money coming from?
In, in this agenda item, it's coming from the stop-arm.
No, there's two agenda, there's, um, okay, so it's just four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand?
For, for fiscal year eighteen, yes, you're correct, ma'am.
Give me a moment, Bill. Okay. Okay, the salary adjustment will be eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars annually, so this four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars is to cover you for the remainder of FY15, which ends when?
September 30th.
September 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
And then this other four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand is to cover you for what time period?
Well, the four-hundred-and-ninety-five is to get us through fiscal year eighteen, and, and the agenda item you see goes to eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand, that's the annual impact that we would expect to see for nineteen.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Um, I guess, I'm
I'm sorry.
Yes. The converse of the statement that putting public safety first should be reflected in our action is not necessarily true, that by not supporting this item, that it indicates public safety is not a priority. Public safety is always a priority in any community. And I've shared, uh, many instances that public safety is a shared responsibility, that without having effective services across the county in many different agencies, that it impacts public safety and the burden on, particularly it impacts the burden on police when we don't have a well-supported county government overall. We have made some decisions to not support other requests from our police. So why is this one elevated to show prioritization of public safety versus body cameras for all officers versus incentive pay that the sheriff has been asking for, for multiple years? There have been, uh, there were other requests from public safety even support administration for the current officers so that, um, they can operate efficiently, which was not considered when we passed a lower milledge rate. So help me understand how this is the one and only item that's to show public safety is number one and, or is priority one or priority period in this county? So that frustrates me, that, that, that would be the sole justification for this only item. It frustrates me that when it comes time for the general quality of life for Cobb County citizens, that that's put on the back burner, but you're safe Cobb County. This is just it, it's very frustrating to, to sit here, and again, just to see the strain on this county, and to be backstepping, and it's easy to backstep for what I hate to say it, but it sometimes seems to be a po I don't know, I don't know if it's politics or what. But I will assure anybody who's wearing a uniform in this county that I support public safety. I recognize public safety is a priority. I recognize that we need to have purity in pay. I also recognize that we are in a very tenuous position in our county, where we have made decisions off of a principle time and time again, which we are willing to defy tonight for this one item, which will, which to me creates disparity between public safety and the other agencies of this county that support public safety with the things that they do day in and day out. We support this, we still have not come up with a solution, we've yet to come up with a solution to effectively address the thirty-to-forty-five or fifty-five, whatever it's gonna be after this item, dollar hole that we have here. And I just, for the argument that public safety is number one, is inadequate to, to support this approach based off of the past decisions that we've made.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, with that, I'll call the question. And it passes three to two with Commissioner Cupid and Chairman voicing opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Bill? All right, uh, on to tab eleven.
Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. Uh, we have five items on regular today. Uh, the first agenda item deals, uh, is a joint agenda item with public safety, uh, that Director Heaton and Chief Kreider, uh, dealing with the request from Senator Patrick to consider, us to consider adopting a resolution to support the Senate in adopting House Bill four-nineteen. House Bill four-nineteen is a bill that adjusts the hours of operations for fireworks, however, provides opportunities for local governments to further restrict it more than state law based upon your local noise ordinance, as long as you do not treat fireworks noise different than other similar noises in your code. So this would, in effect, as I was mentioning earlier during the code amendment section, allow us to tie this to construction noise or some other type of noise, and further restrict the hours of ignition of fireworks outside of the days where the, where the, where the state allows it to happen to a later time period. Uh, the city of Sandy Springs passed a similar resolution in 2017, and Senator Patrick asked us, uh, to, to make a request if you would consider adopting this resolution, uh, to allow this to, um, uh, to encourage our Senate to dissent. So our formal recommendation is the Board of Commissioners to adopt the resolution, encourage the state Senate to approve House Bill four-nineteen, authorize the Chairman to execute the next three documents, and authorize the submitted resolution to the Cobb County Legislative Delegation.
Commissioner Burl.
Before I make a motion to approve, just for some clarity, because we did have some discussion yesterday
Yes, ma'am.
regarding this, um, and I've since talked to legal, and this would give us more local control, um, with regard to the current state rules
Yes, ma'am.
on fireworks. So, um, would support this and make a motion to approve.
Have a second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two deals with, uh, the authorization to fund, uh, to, to do a fund balance appropriate
Item number two deals with the authorization to fund, to, to do a fund balance appropriation within the general fund from previously, for a previously approved appropriation for security cameras. That in two thousand seventeen, the board gave us sixteen thousand dollars to install security cameras into community development. That's important because we are a major revenue generating agency. This allows us to have better cash security procedures. We are asking the board to basically take the money that we were authorized in two thousand seventeen and put this into our budget for two thousand eighteen, so we can pay our venture, please.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, motion to approve is presented.
Have a second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Mr. Hughes and Gaines to, to handle the next three items.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, County Manager. The purpose of this agenda item, agenda item is to request your approval of a request for Enterprise Zone Incentives for Day Paper and Bag LLC. By way of brief background, Enterprise Zones are geographical areas around the county wherein various, wherein various incentives are offered to qualified businesses and service enterprises. A qualifying business or service is one that creates at least five new jobs, five new full-time jobs. The business may be new, an expansion, a reinvestment of an existing business or service enterprise. And this, the request before you this evening involves a business that would be located in the South Cobb Enterprise Zone that was established in July two thousand thirteen. Day Paper and Bag is currently, they distribute paper, packaging, and janitorial supplies. They're proposing to relocate to four forty Interstate West Parkway in Cobb County near Factory Show's Road. They're currently located in Ostel in a primarily what is a distribution center. With this request and relocation, they would be expanding their operations and providing additional capital investment to Cobb County. Specifically Core Five, or Core Five Industrial Partners, who's the owner and developer of the property, would be leasing this building to Day Paper. They'll invest about one point two million dollars in tenant improvements for the facility. Day Paper will invest an additional four million in machinery and equipment for a total, new total capital investment of five point two million dollars. They anticipate creating at least seventy jobs over the next ten-year period with approximately eighteen million, eighteen million in, in, or salary over that timeframe. With that brief background, staff would recommend your approval, and will be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, can you provide what the incentive that's being offered?
In this case, Commissioner, the, this would be a property tax abatement just for the machinery or personal property that's owned by Day Paper.
Okay, does that impact the special tax district in the area?
We, we are going to require a pilot so that they will make sure the district stays whole.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's so moved.
Second.
Have a second? Any questions? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Jason Gaines, the Planning Division Manager for Cobb County Community Development. And I'm here to talk briefly this evening about the proposed design guideline package for Mableton Parkway and Veterans Memorial Highway. As a bit of background, these two corridors were two of four areas that were originally identified in two thousand sixteen for the creation of design guidelines. These two particular corridors were combined due to their proximity with one another. So with that, we'll go on to the next slide. So just to give a little purpose and background, the intent of these and all the design guidelines are to provide direction for renovation, redevelopment, development of new structures within the corridors of the areas in question to improve aesthetics and safety, and to improve livability and overall quality of life. And just to be clear, proposed design guidelines are only applicable to non-single-family residential properties. So primarily focused on commercial and industrial uses. So our focus areas, again, Veterans Memorial Highway, Mableton Parkway, both pretty long corridors. We're looking at about seven miles on Veterans Memorial Highway and approximately four miles along Mableton Parkway. With those corridors being so long, there was a dedicated focus to looking at the different nodes along those corridors to concentrate a lot of the improvements. So we looked at two classes of nodes, centers, which focus on a half-mile radius, and then villages would focus on a quarter-mile radius, and those are identified on the graphic before you. Preparation of the guidelines included a well-put-together team. We worked with the collaborative firm as our prime consultant on the project. They are a Fulton County-based firm which specializes in program management and various urban planning and design activities. The subconsultant was John Benson and Associates, a Cobb County-based landscape architecture firm. And of course, my staff and I had a heavy hand in the project development as well. So let's talk a little bit about the design guideline components. Streetscape standards, features along the public right-of-way, recommended landscaping materials, signage, benches, trash receptacles, and other street furniture, retaining walls and screening, fencing. These are all aspects that are covered within the streetscape standards portion of this. And from that you can see on this graphic examples of a constrained right-of-way cross-section and a wider right-of-way cross-section, and that's important along these two corridors, which are state routes, and have varying right-of-way widths throughout. In some cases, as wide as up to a hundred and fifty feet. Next slide, please. Another main component, or primary component, are the architectural standards, what the actual structures within the areas look like. Facade materials, your, your frontage of your, the face, outer wall of your buildings, combination of bricks, stucco, stone, windows, doors, and other fenestration features. Roofline and roofing materials were also integral parts of the architectural standards put forth here. Access management was another key piece, talking about access easements and driveway consolidation to help with the flow of traffic and to help improve safety for pedestrians walking alongside or trying to cross these two roadways. Like many of our projects, there was an intense public engagement piece with this. Consisted of three public meetings, which you can see here as far as the dates, and which each meeting consisted of is pretty much our, our typical format, where we have an introductory kickoff meeting where we explain the project. We come back with an interactive design workshop, and then we have a culmination meeting to kind of finalize and put a cap on it and show people what the final recommendations were based off of that public feedback. One big piece of this was the online visual preference survey. We actually did the visual preference survey in person at the kickoff meeting, but then we actually put it online and left it up for approximately two months. During that time period, over four hundred responses were received, and there was a lot of, of interest, and that showed in the number of survey responses that we received when we put the survey online. We also had a stakeholder committee, which consisted of residents of various subdivisions of residential communities in the area, as well as commercial property and, and, and business owners. Speaking of the latter, there was a desire to have a more intense focus on those commercial property owners, since they are the ones who are going to be primarily impacted by anything that came out of this. So we actually had an additional meeting added to the calendar where we focused on, on addressing their questions and concerns. So the way we propose implementation for the design guidelines is through the site plan review process primarily. This is pretty much the way that all of our design guideline areas are handled in the county. It can also be added to a rezoning request as a stipulation of zoning by the district commissioner. And, and the really important piece with this is that it's a living document. Whatever is adopted, if anything is adopted tonight, it's, it's not etched in stone. We'll constantly look at it, review it, see how effective it is, see where it can be tweaked, and, and make changes to improve its effectiveness and its implementation. So with that, are there any questions? I'll stand for them.
Commissioner Cupid.
No questions, I think staff did a great job, and there's a lot of community involvement and feedback with respect to this proposal, and we're fortunate to have some gentlemen who work in the industry also review this document and provide feedback, so we'd have some assurance that this could be utilized, let's put it that way. And I'm hopeful that this will help to streamline the pattern of development or appearance of development along these two corridors. So with that, I move that we adopt the design guidelines for the Mableton Parkway and Veterans Memorial Highway corridors.
Second.
Have a second, any questions, or any discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Chairman and Commissioners, the purpose of this agenda item is to present for your consideration and approval the facade improvement program policies and procedures. By way of brief background, the purpose of the program is to provide a, a financial incentive to enhance the overall appearance of commercial buildings, similar to the ones that you just saw. They're subject to the design guidelines you just adopted. Approving the aesthetics of buildings also improve economic vitality, increase property values, and also enhance the marketability of space within buildings with the, with the end goal of attracting new businesses to these spaces. Eligible areas for use of these funds, the properties have to be in a recent redevelopment inventory, or they have to be located in a corridor study that was prepared by, by staff, and they have to be within a designated low to moderate income census tract, where fifty-one percent of the household incomes are, are at least low to moderate income. That's a designation determined by HUD on an annual basis. The way the program would work, funding and match requirements, funding is based on the square footage of the eligible facade. Building, the building is in, the buildings in these eligible areas would could receive up to twenty-five dollars per square foot, with a maximum of twenty thousand dollars per building. And then the applicants would also have to provide a, a match, a financial match on their own of at least five percent. The program funding provided in the, is provided in the form of a loan with zero interest, and it's forgiven at a rate of twenty percent each year over a five-year period with no payments required. The property must be maintained in accordance with program requirements in terms of retention of ownership, occupancy by the, the original tenant, maintenance of the facade, insurance, as well as payments of all local taxes. Some examples of how activities that could be funded would be masonry repairs, storefront reconstruction, cornice repairs, exterior painting, stucco, awnings, canopies, and so forth. And eligible applicants are activities would be landscaping, gun shops, pawn shops, liquor stores, sexually oriented businesses, as well as nail shops. The facade program, in terms of priorities, we want to obviously have it support the overall goals of the county's comprehensive plan. We want to eliminate blighted properties, return vacant buildings to active use, and buildings located in areas where public investment has taken place, want to be sure that we support that as well. The design guidelines, similar to the ones we just adopted, would be the, the type of things we hope to incentivize in these areas. The, in, in fact, the specific quarters that were just, where your design guidelines were approved are just what we have in mind in terms of serving as a carrot for property owners in those areas, hopefully to improve their commercial properties. In terms of next steps, staff has already identified initially seventy-five thousand dollars to serve as sort of a cap, initial startup capital for this through our CDBG program. We will need thirty days to do a public notice, public comment period, and we'll bring back to you sometime in March, an agenda item officially allocating the CDBG funding for the project, or to fund the project. If we see during the course, when the program is adopted, that there's additional interest, we can also always allocate additional funding sometime this year, and then we can also allocate funding in, in subsequent years as well. With that background, I would ask for your support of the, of the program, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Burrow. Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Michael. Canton Road Corridor, would just the redevelopment sites be eligible or in the enterprise zone or anywhere?
If, if, if it's in a low to moderate income census tract.
Okay. Okay, so it'd be an individual area basis?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and those, those census tracts, HUD reviews those annually.
Okay. But it does look like some of that, mostly in the enterprise zone, would qualify or could.
Potentially, we certainly look at that, Commissioner.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments before I make a motion?
They were good.
Thanks, Michael, and I make a motion to approve.
Have a second, any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero, thank you, Michael. Okay, on to tab twelve, right? And O lost. Not ivory all at once. You can come up there, Bill, sure.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. At this time, we are asking the board to adopt a resolution, seeking approval of state legislation for the purpose of the other local option sales tax, the O lost, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, I'll let Commissioner Weatherford make the motion there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I would, to make a few comments.
Sure, absolutely.
Just to clarify some things in some of the possibly erroneous information going around about this. This would only allow us to ask for a resolution from the legislator to put this to a referendum, so that all the voters of the county can decide whether or not this is good or not. This will allow the county and its six municipalities to fully fund their public safety. It's been vetted financially by our staff and by others, and we feel like this is a good opportunity and an, an option to go. It's one option and that we can move forward with. It would allow all that use our public safety resources, both in and out of the county, to pay with this consumption tax, not just the property owners. As we learned yesterday in our work session, that we are underfunded in the five-year strategic plan for public safety, somewhere in the area of ten to twenty million dollars, and this would help alleviate that and keep an ongoing funding source. It's definitely not a slush fund or any of those types of things. It is a way and a path forward that would reduce the burden on property tax and property owners in Cobb County, and allow those that use our public safety to fund it through a different source. And in doing that, it would free up resources in the general fund, which would possibly and probably lead to having certainly no increase or a reduction in the millage rate for the current property owners. So with that, sir, I would like to request the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution seeking approval of the state legislator for a proposed other law, other local option sales tax called the O lost, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Have a second? I'll second. I'll second, okay. All right, no discussion. I'm sorry? Commissioner Ott, you have any questions, or I'm just, I have some comments.
All right, that's fine, I'll start, I don't care. As we talked yesterday, I totally support trying to find a way to remove funding for the police out of the general fund. But as I also stated yesterday, I have grave concerns about the unwillingness to put in our request to the legislators what's going to happen to the money that's in the general fund. Where this would, as Commissioner Weatherford said, yes, it would refund the police and some capital needs that we have, vehicle replacements and all that, but it also frees up ninety-six million dollars in the general fund. And if you use some of those proceeds to fill the, the gaps that have been identified, you still have fifty to sixty- still have $50 to $60 million left, and I just, I can't go forward without seeing what's going to happen to that.
Good. Commissioner Burrow?
And yesterday in our discussion, I thought that that language was going to be added as far as how we were going to identify public safety and what that included. And I thought you and Commissioner Weatherford were going to work on that before the meeting.
That makes up different.
Okay.
Sorry?
And also the consideration for the, currently in the budget is there's $70 million in the current budget for public safety. And if that comes out and goes to a penny tax, we've got to identify what's going to happen to that and what the millage rate would be equivalent or be reduced to. However, in my understanding of what we're voting on tonight is not to put forward a penny tax, is to ask the legislature to consider approving this in order for us to even vote on putting it to a referendum and then have the public vote on a referendum.
Correct.
Legal, am I correct in that?
Yes, you are.
So we're not voting to increase anyone's taxes tonight, and I do agree with Commissioner Ott that when the time comes, if we decide to even move forward on this as a referendum, that has to come back to a vote of this board to put it to a referendum, and that's where it would be outlined as to make it clear what that referendum would include and what consideration or what reduction in the millage would be to compensate for that. So.
Good. Commissioner Weatherford?
Certainly. Just to address that, as Commissioner Burrow stated, this is only the request of a resolution to ask them to put this forward through the local legislation. Legal and public safety and to address Commissioner Ott's concerns, we've been working on a draft bill. And the way the process works is we present this resolution, and then if passed tomorrow, we will present to the board, to the local legislation Cobb delegation, what our draft would look like. If they agree to take that forward, then both our legal and their legal team will work together to address the concerns that this board has, Commissioner Ott has, which I can assure you, as I have assured him, would include possible millage rate reductions, which will be included in that bill. Once that bill is passed, if it does to the House and the Senate, then it will come back to this board, and then we, as Commissioner Burrow said, would vote to put that on a referendum if that bill meets what we agree to. So this is only the initial process to get it started, allow them to move forward, allow them to come up with a draft bill, working with county staff to make sure it meets the needs of what commissioners have requested. And then if that occurs, then it comes back for us for review, then we must vote to put it a referendum in November. So that is a process, and again, this is only a resolution asking them to begin that process.
Commissioner Cupid, do you have any comments?
As a board, I think we've discussed over time how we can focus funding for public safety. We've considered a police fund similar to the fire fund so that they can have a dedicated source of funding. And we've also looked at our SPOLOs as far as some capital needs and have made some unique considerations toward that department, and they have some considerable investment in the 2016 SPOLOs that passed. However, they, like many other agencies in our county, still are coming up short with some of the unique ways that we've looked at funding some of those gaps. So I can certainly understand the desire to consider something different. But my concern goes to, and reflects the concerns I've already shared with respect to looking at our budget in piecemeal or one-off fashion of looking one agency without considering the whole of Cobb County. As has been expressed in many of the correspondence that our board has received, the county has a shortfall of $30 to $55 million, which is significant on its own, but is a fraction of the amount of dollars that could be generated by a penny sales tax, which would be dedicated towards one agency. And while setting aside money for public safety or particularly police through that funding source, because fire funds still exist, but for police through that funding source would help to soften impacts to the general fund, it is, there still is going to be a gap in addressing the full needs of county government throughout all of our agencies. And I would much prefer to see this being offered with a plan of how we're going to address, a very specific plan about how those other needs are going to be addressed before we apply this particular tax and then come back and increase the millage or ask for another tax to address not only our current needs in Cobb County government, but our future needs. And this has been also another challenge, I think, that our board is facing, is that we keep looking at what our current day needs are or what they were yesterday without looking forward and planning for what we know those needs are going to be, even if you just look at the cost of services and how they generally increase over time, and also our population growth over time. And we're making budgetary decisions that I think, yes, we're looking at today, looking back, without looking at the full picture of Cobb County. Today, I had a very interesting discussion with someone about Cobb County government, and we spoke about a lot of the decisions that it takes for our board to make and how sometimes we will not see the fruit of our actions. We won't see development or policy be fully in place until another five, 10 years down the line. And, you know, if we just look at our here and now without taking that into account, we're always going to be asking the taxpayer for more. And I think that has only added to their frustration. We're in a position, we've been rolling back our millage, and I think until we get the millage right to reflect, again, ongoing revenue, to meet ongoing need, until we really get that millage right or understand how a new sales tax is going to address our ongoing expenses in the county, it's just very difficult to see us not coming back next year, five years, two years, five years from now, asking for some other financial accommodation. So while I can certainly understand the desire to see funding of this nature, I just, I think the timing of it is, without all of those other things, it is off for me and difficult to support. There's also, I'm sorry, I'm long-winded tonight, Chairman. You know, a thought that, well, this is a resolution, we'll have more numbers after we have the state legislature take a look at it, but I feel as if we should be informing the state legislature because public safety and police, that's a function of local government. So why would we not try to have that in order before we go present something to them, you know, which I think would be also, to me, make me feel more comfortable about how it's going to come back to us. There's also, and I'm not going to say this is always the case, and I don't mean any disrespect to those that do serve in state legislature, but there's always a question about how referendums are worded, you know, whether or not they fully convey what is going on, and I'm just, I feel like we have the ability to provide the most control and direction with how this would move forward before we put something forward to the legislature for their review. So with that, I can't support this item tonight, even though I do believe that, I do believe that we should take a look at how public safety is more robustly funded. I just think we're just at a time right now in our county where we've got to get our arms around this big gaping hole that's just compromising of how the entire county is functioning right now.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments. What I'm trying to do is engage the public more and more in our conversations here at the board and what we try to do. I think that, say what you want to, this approach that we've done here over the last year has brought a lot more people to these meetings, we've got a lot more emails, and they are more engaged. And this is another venue for them to get engaged. Obviously, I've got a lot of emails about pros and cons for the tax, and my answer to them is that you're going to get your opportunity in November, if this is put on the ballot, to say yes or no. What I don't want to do is that if by shutting this down, then I'm shutting off one avenue where they can get engaged, and that limits the options that I have, the board has, to fund the budget in the future. We are, as you know, implementing a new five-year plan where we try to address exactly what Commissioner Cupid's talking about, to get our arms around what the future looks like. And while I appreciate her concerns, and I think we're all, she and I, basically trying to accomplish the same thing, I'm just a little bit more wide in my latitude how to approach that. Because for right now, we have three different approaches to funding, just to say the public safety portion of our budget. One of them is to, like she says, and she and I agree on this, this is what it costs for public safety in Cobb County, and this is what the millage rate is, and we're asking you to pay for that. That's one option, all right? Another one is another discussion we had yesterday at the work session where we have a special service district, where you just, that the millage from that special service district only goes to public safety. That's another venue. And the third one is the O-Lost. So what's happened here is that we've gone from one option where we sit here and we fight each other over, you know, trying to take money away from public safety by giving it to another program. We split this off into another revenue stream and fund it that way. There are pros and cons for the O-Lost, and we brought those up yesterday, too. And I would encourage those who have a chance to go look at the work session yesterday to see that, the PowerPoint slide that Bill put together about the pros and cons for that. So all I'm trying to do here is give us the flexibility on various options as to how to approach funding in the future. Because the reality is that this, even if the legislature gives us the approval to put it on the ballot, we have 10 more months to go and hear from the public about the good and bad of that. And the reason I think I'm encouraged by that is that I remember very well about certain issues that I would have been thinking, ah, so I'm going to vote on this, but after hearing from the public, I changed my mind. And that was in 10 months, that was 10 weeks. So here we're going to have 10 months for the public to get re-engaged on this very important issue that's going to certainly draw a lot of public attention and sell a lot of newspapers. The other options are also going to be out there, but the other two options don't really help me until the 2020 budget. So pretty much, we're still going to be stuck with the conventional approach of trying to find a millage rate and convince the voters this summer to pay for the millage, to pay for our services that we agree on this summer. So the reason that I'm going to support this is that it just gives us another item to consider. All we're doing is we're just considering this option, and unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, it is a way of controlling government here, we have to go through the legislator to do that. And to Commissioner Ott's concern here, and I spoke today with a senator from the state senate, we will simply give them this resolution, and they will take this to their legislative council, and they will write the bill. And in the process of writing that bill, they'll get input from us, and then they'll come back to us, authorizing us to go to our director of elections to put them on the ballot. So there's a lot of moving parts here, and that I'm just saying here like Commissioner Burrow, is that we're just simply asking for permission to consider it for November. That's all we're doing. So with that, unless it's under further discussions, I'll go ahead and call a question, okay? So it passes three to two with Commissioner Cupid and not in opposition. All right, thank you. So now we're going to go on to 13, and I think, Bill, you're still there.
Yes, sir. We have one item tonight, and first and foremost, I just wanted to explain that this item is a, just a budget amendment. It's not an increase, we're just shifting budgets around. On November 24, 2015, the Board of Commissioners approved a contract with Moreland Altabelli for program management related to the 2016 Parks SPOLOs program. They do all the program management for the projects that we have in SPOLOs for parks. That contract was $6,89,063.06. This agenda item is not changing that contract in any way, shape, or form, or increasing the budget. What we are asking for is the board to authorize the creation of a consolidation program unit to accommodate payment of expenditures that involve multiple programs within the 2016 Parks SPOLOs and authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions. This, and I know we talked about this at agenda prep and work session the other day, this will not change our ability to track the program management expenses by project. It will just provide a little bit more ease and consolidation for payment processing. So we've spoken with Jimmy and his team, and we're still on board that we will be able to track this by project, give you the budgets of what we're budgeting and the actuals, and provide that through the SPOLOs updates.
Following of the contractors' amounts?
Yes, sir.
That was a concern yesterday.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Weatherford, this is yours.
Thank you. We again discussed this pretty much at length yesterday, and you're satisfied that the processes are in place, and this is something that is included in the SPOLOs.
Yes, sir. We will work very closely with parks as we try to get the process up and going for the first presentation, and then if, with the commissioner's input as well as the SPOLOs oversight committee's input, we can always revise the process to provide the transparency that you're looking for. But I think we got a very clear picture yesterday of what you're looking for, and we think we can absolutely meet those requirements.
Great. Motion to approve this presented.
We have a second? Any discussion?
My comment is kind of going along with what, you know, that we, I just want to make sure that we publicly say that we got a commitment from Rob and everyone else that we will move forward with the SPOLOs oversight committee getting a kind of, some sort of tracking or ability to see how the expenses are being spent.
Commissioner Ott will provide those in the monthly reports as far as the hourly charges from the consultant management fees.
Okay, with that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay, thank you, Bill. And we've done the tab 14 already. So for appointments, what I like to do is make a motion to approve, but I like to combine the three appointments into just one nomination since they're all going to the same board. So I like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Juliana Thomas, Thompson, I'm sorry, to the Region One Behavioral Health and Disabilities Planning Board at post five, Yvonne Jackson to post seven, and then to Tricia Brown for a three-year term to expire in 2020 to fill a vacancy in post eight. A second? Any discussion? Call a question? It passes five to zero. And Commissioner Cupid, you have the next one.
No, it's mine.
Oh, I apologize. I tried.
It's just a reportment to reappoint Abby Schiffman to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
Do I have a motion? I have a second?
Is it announced?
Give a second? Any discussion? Call a question? And it passes five to zero. Okay, and I just simply want to announce that, once again, it's a great pleasure I appoint, I'm asking Commissioner Cupid to return as a vice chairman for 2018. And in the interest of continuity, because of the new budget process, I've also asked all the commissioners to retain their original commissioner, their budget, their commission assignments for 2018. So with that, I'll start with, we have commissioner comments, I believe. With that, I'll start with you, Commissioner Cupid.
There are a lot of events going on at the county, and we just encourage the public to sign up for my newsletter at cobbcounty.org/cupid. There's a lot of my heart I would like to address tonight and don't know where to begin and don't know how to be constrained within five minutes, but I'm going to do my best. Torn about the vote tonight with respect to our senior faci- Torn about the vote tonight with respect to our senior facilities and the membership fee that's been applied, and strongly considered not supporting that agenda item tonight. And my support of that item is not necessarily in favor that there needs to be any fees at all. During a prior meeting, we already voted to support a membership fee. And to not support this item tonight and supporting the fee during our prior vote, I felt as if I'd be contradicting some of the comments that I heard from seniors about making, about the senior center being affordable and having an outright $60 fee certainly seemed a lot less affordable than prorating that fee by month. Also, we made an improvement tonight by not adjusting the fees for rental, which will limit the cost of classes and some of the other programs that are at the facility. And I felt like our constraint on that fee tonight was also in response to the lack of affordability of senior centers. But I do think that in an ideal situation, there would be no fees for our seniors at all, that we would support a millage rate for our county that supports the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, where we recognize that quality of life should not have to burden those already burdened within our communities. And it's frustrating, in a sense, to not see how we move to that end. I just see us not making decisions that really spread out the burden that it takes to support a healthy county amongst all of us here. Just seeing one-off decisions that benefit some and put burden on others in ways that just seem to have no end. And while, you know, I can recognize why we may do what we're doing for individual decisions, I'm just, I'm very concerned about the health of the decisions that we're making and the health of this county with some of these decisions. Looking forward to our budget season this summer to see what we do to address these holes. And, you know, it's my desire that we just get to a place in Cobb County where we are adequately funding all of the opportunities in Cobb County that make this county great beyond a stadium and beyond public safety. You know, and I've just, I've seen us just put money towards things, again, that just, they seem to be causing more division than sharing a collective view and approach that we're all in this together and having as much emphasis for all in Cobb County. That's my hope and desire, that we get to that point, and that's addressed with having a healthy millage rate for our county. It would have been nice to see a sales tax, even if we did move forward with the lost, what we're calling the O-Loss, to see that penny goes towards supporting all of Cobb County and taking the word from our president, making all of Cobb County great. But, you know, I just think that with looking at one department without seeing that we're all in this together, that it just, it just limits opportunity for us. You know, nobody likes taxes, nobody likes fees, but I think one way that kind of just lessens the hardship on all is to spread the burden on all. And, you know, and while we would have seen some modest increase with the millage rate that impacted taxes, now we're seeing just a ballooning impact with fees. And I just don't know if that's the right way for us to go, again, to address the health of the entire county. So with our seniors, I hope that you find some comfort in knowing that the blow or the impact to you is just not as harsh as it was on paper prior to today's vote. And just know that we are mindful, at least this commissioner is very mindful of the burden that this places upon many of you who aren't in constrained income, and that I'm hoping that we can find a better way to address this as we address the needs of the county.
Commissioner, Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, and then I wanted to address some of the concerns that Commissioner Cupid has. I too share some of her concerns. However, I believe that the vote tonight and hopefully the move forward with the O-Loss will address some of those concerns by relieving the burden on the general fund, which I think benefits all departments in Cobb County and all facets of Cobb County. So that at least is my intention. And I can assure the commissioners that we work together, if this goes forward through the legislature, that some of those concerns that Commissioner Ott had, as well as Commissioner Cupid, were addressed in the bill, and working with legal, we've already begun doing that, that those will be addressed. And when that bill comes back before us, we'll all have a chance to examine it before we vote for a referendum and put it on the agenda. With that, I just wanted to have a couple of things. We have, with our new public community relations officers, each precinct, the chief register did, we have coffee with your cops. That's on January the 26th, from 8:30 to 10:30 at Starbucks on Barrett Parkway in Kennesaw, and it brings officers in the community together so they can serve together over coffee. And I'm sure there will be some cop biscuits there as well. If you don't know what those are, that's donuts. And apparently, that's in Commissioner Burroughs' district, so we're going to move it, and that way she won't be able to claim anything about it. So that is the 26th, at 8:30 to 10:30 at Starbucks on Ernest Barrett Parkway.
Leave him alone.
And one other thing is, as many of you know, we are working hard on the Parks Bond, and I'd like to present to you the latest property we purchased in District 1. This is Anderson Road. So if you'll show those, and then I'll be complete, sir.
Commissioner, I just want to say, Commissioner Weatherford, first of all, I want to thank you for using the word "working together," because we're going to work together. I appreciate your spirit of comradeship and that. And secondly, I really want to commend you for all you have done on getting some really remarkable property. And I also want to commend Commissioner Cupid, because Roberta Cook tonight was commenting that we've, the property that you acquired, I meant to acquire, joins on to some existing property for assembling. So I think this really speaks, you know, well to both of this end of the table. Now we'll see what happens on this end with their comments.
Last Thursday, we had the honor of our 29th adoption on our Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program. Mr. Pitts and his wife, where's my picture?
I thought you wanted video.
Oh, yeah, we'll do the video afterwards. There's a picture. Adopted Scuffy, and Scuffy is in that basket. He is tiny, and he is cute as pie. And they adopted him through the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program. And this was quite an honor, because we don't have very many World War II veterans left in this world. And Mr. Pitts heard about the program, and his wife had been wanting a puppy, so they got a six-week-old little terrier named Scuff, and they named him Scuffy. So it was a very heartwarming event. We had Fox 5 News there, and you're getting ready to see a clip from that. We had the MDJ there and Cobb TV. So you can check out all the adoptions on Facebook. Since Thursday, we've had three more in the last few days. So we're up to 32. Through the generosity of Superior Plumbing, we have 50 pet adoptions from the Cobb County Animal Shelter that, in this program. So we adopted 32 out of 50, so there's still room for more. And I'd just like to give a shout out to the staff at the shelter and also Superior Plumbing for their donation. And now we have a little video that I want you all to see. And all the veterans up here can go get a dog.
A new program in Cobb County matches military veterans with pets from a shelter, and it even covers the cost of adoption.
Today, a World War II veteran got the pet of his dreams. At Fox 5, Denise Dillon was there for the introduction.
This really is a win-win program. The military veterans get to adopt an animal for free, and the pets who were once strays or animals no longer wanted, well, they get a new home. Mr. Paul Pitts has a new cuddly friend, Scuffy, the 96-year-old Army veteran served in World War II.
I was in the jungle for 14 months. I went to the Philippines, the Philippines. I stayed there, they dropped that comet bomb.
Through the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program, Mr. Pitts and his wife, Dora, were able to adopt little Scuffy free of charge at the Cobb County Animal Shelter.
Thank you for your service. My father was in the Army.
Cobb County Commissioner Joanne Burrell started the program as a way to say thank you to those who have served, and in some cases, to help ease the emotional trauma some veterans suffer.
That dogs and cats are good therapy for veterans with PTSD and different issues after they've served our country.
This match warmed her heart. Burrell's father was also a World War II veteran.
And it's just an honor to have a World War II vet that's still with us, you know, to come out today and adopt a dog.
The Pitts had a chance to pick from any of the animals here, and knew Scuffy was the one for them.
I think he's a cute little fella.
You always wanted a puppy. And finally, I made up my mind to get one.
And as they took little Scuffy home with smiles on their faces, there's no doubt Scuffy will have a happy life.
Scuffy found a good home, and he'll be loved and cared for.
Mr. Pitts was so excited, he even brought a brand-new leash and even a sweater for the little guy. Now, the program's name, Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets, gets its name because Superior Plumbing donated enough money to cover 50 adoptions. In Cobb County, Denise Dillon, Fox 5 News.
Thank you. Scuffy lives in District 4 in Austell, and I've sent Commissioner Cupid some of the clips and newspaper articles since he's in her district, too. Also, today I spoke to the Lockheed Martin Retirees Association, and I'd just like to thank them for inviting me to speak. They had some great feedback on the senior fees, because they do use the East Cobb Senior Center every week on Tuesday morning. And also, they were very pleased to hear the good news that Commissioner Ott shared yesterday on the revenue from the Braves. So I couldn't wait to share all that with them. On January 30th, next Tuesday, the Children's Healthcare of Atlanta will be having a ribbon cutting for their new outpatient care center on Big Shanty Road, 605 Big Shanty Road, and it's next Tuesday, the 30th, at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burroughs, and thank you again. Congratulations on your really great Pets for Vets program. 30, I mean, 30 does a lot. Superior Pets, that's truly remarkable.
Excuse me, Chairman, I hate to interrupt you, but I wanted to share something with you before you say that the meeting is adjourned?
I'm not.
Oh, okay, we still have Commissioner Ott, okay, just, yes.
Okay, I'll come back to you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Ott.
I'm sorry. How could I forget?
I know I'm way over here, but I'm still here. I just have a couple. Two things coming up this weekend. On Saturday, 6th District Congresswoman Karen Handel's legislative staff will be holding a mobile town hall at the East Cobb Library from 11 until 1:00. Her district director, Ashley Jenkins, and constituent services liaison, Emily Sasser, will be on site to address any federal issues that the residents in the 6th District here in Cobb may need assistance with, social security, IRS, immigration, or the post office. I didn't write that stuff. All right. The second thing happening this weekend is in another part of the district, and this happens on Saturday and Sunday. Commissioner Burroughs is sure to be there to find out what the new Braves mascot's going to be. This weekend is Shop Fest. Well, it's from 10 o'clock until 4 o'clock on Saturday, and 10 until 3 on Sunday. Lots of stuff going on at SunTrust Park and the Battery for the kids and the adults, and admission is free. Yes, autographs, players, alumnis, and coaches will all be there, so if you want to go out and kind of get a preview of what might be happening in the 2018 season, get out there. The last thing I want to talk about is the length of our agendas. I realize that everything that we talk about and that we vote on and we discuss are important. But I think that, just look out in the audience, okay? Staff is out there. They have been here since, many of them, 8 o'clock this morning. The people watching on TV have been watching since 7 o'clock this evening, okay? I just think that we need to start thinking about what goes on the agenda in the interest of both staff and the public watching so that they can, I mean, these agendas, these meetings are too long. Certain things need to either go to a work session or just need to wait till a meeting, you know, when we have code amendments, this happens every single time, that we're here till 11 or 12 o'clock at night because we're changing the code amendments. And if we're going to have these, all these code amendment meetings that we're having, then we need to take into account the rest of the agenda for the staff's sake and the public's sake, because we're paid to be here. Not a lot, but we're paid to be here. But I just, I just don't think it's fair to the public and to the staff for meetings that go on for four hours or more. And so I just think that, Rob, since it's your agenda, that consideration needs to be, when we start, if the agenda starts getting long, you tell staff that's going to have to wait. You know, obviously, the critical items can be on the agenda, but I think that there are some things that were on tonight that could have waited, with the idea, because we had a whole lot more code amendments, especially with the economic development and some of the other things that were on there, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The agenda item where we address the Mableton Parkway Veterans Memorial Highway Design Guidelines, I presume that it was read or in the document, but I need to actually read in some changes to some of the sections for the motion. So I think for it to formally be included, there needs to be a reconsideration of the vote, and then the motion needs to be then amended.
Right. So you need a motion to reconsider in a second.
Okay. So I, okay, so I move that we reconsider the vote regarding the adoption of the Mableton Parkway Veterans Memorial Highway Design Guidelines.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I move that we adopt the Mableton Parkway Veterans Memorial Highway Design Guidelines with the following changes. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right, right.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yes.
So I'll call a question on the reconsider.
Thank you.
It passes, you need to vote, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
I deserve a vote, you're good.
Thank you. Okay, so I move that we adopt the design guidelines for Mableton Parkway and Veterans Memorial with the following changes. One, for the constrained right-of-way section, to, A, include additional options for features in between street trees, such as landscape berms, fences, retaining walls, and the like. B, require the tree canopy height to be no less than six feet. Number two, for the wide right-of-way section, to add a provision, to, A, add a provision for the roadside swale to be optional, dependent upon the downward slope of the property away from the roadway, with details to be determined at plan review on a case-by-case basis. And B, to increase the spacing between pedestrian scale lights from 35 feet to 50 feet. Three, for the corridor front to zone section, to add, A, parking for buildings with direct frontage on Mableton Parkway or Veterans Memorial Highway. One visible row of parking is permitted between the front of the building and the public right-of-way. Number four, for the silent section, section A to read. Item six should be amended to reflect, to read reflective films or reflective coatings on windows, including mirrored glass are prohibited. And lastly, five, fencing section, to add a written description and photographic example of allowable preferred fencing standard.
Any discussion? Now, do I, I'd have a separate motion to accept, or the reconsidered motion would be sufficient?
Let's see a second of the motion, right?
I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay, all right, good. All right, you moved to accept the revisions, right? Okay, so you got a second? Any discussion? Call the question? It passes 5 to 0. And with that, adjourned? And with that adjourned.